So thank you Vice Chair Trujillo Davis. So with that, would it be okay, members, if we at least start through some of the logistical upfront meeting agenda items? Is that good? All right.
It's good.
All right, Ms. Jones, we'll start the meeting and in doing so, would you mind doing a roll call vote for us?
Yes, and I just see that Member Bitzer signed on, so we'll start with him. Member Bitzer, can you hear us and record your vote? There he is. Good morning, welcome. Member Kate, have you joined us? Member Garcia, are you present?
Yes.
Member Honker.
Yes, I am here. It looked like Member Bitzer couldn't hear.
No, I was asking if you could hear me, I was muted.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we got him, but thank you. Vice Chair Trujillo Davis?
Yes, present.
And Chair Sweeney?
Yes, I'm here.
Righty, we are all present with the exception of Member Kate.
Wonderful, thank you, Ms. Jones. With that, we're on Agenda Item Number Two of our draft agenda, which is the approval of the agenda. Is there any, any changes we need to make, comments, Ms. Solaria or Ms. Jones? Did anything come up last minute?
No, no last minute agenda items, no ma'am.
Okay. And so, members, do you have any comments? If not, love to entertain a motion.
I will move, we approve the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Honker.
Second.
Thank you, Member Bitzer, for your second. With that, let's do a quick roll call vote, Ms. Jones.
Member Bitzer, how do you vote?
I'll vote yes.
Member Kate is not here yet. Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Honker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo Davis?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair Sweeney.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. All right, with that, we're on our next agenda item, Agenda Item Number Three, Approval of June 24, 2022 Minutes. All members, were you able to review? And if so, do you have any comments or suggested revisions? And I did review it myself, I didn't have any comments or revisions, and nobody else did. Would you?
I'll move, we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Thank you, Member Honker. Thank you, Member Garcia, for your second. With that, Ms. Jones, if there's no further discussion, would you please do a roll call vote?
Yes. Member Bitzer, how do you vote on the minutes?
I'll vote yes.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Honker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo Davis?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes passes.
Wonderful, thank you, thank you, everybody. So that takes us to our Agenda Item Number Four. That is public comment. Ms. Jones, has there been any indication or anybody asking to make a public comment this one?
No one has reached out, Madam Chair, to make any kind of general public comment this morning.
Okay. Okay. So with that, I don't see any, I don't think anybody else today this morning. If not, I guess we can go on to Agenda Item Number Five. And that is EIB 22-28 and the matter of proposed new regulation, apologize, new regulation 20.2.101 NMAC carbon dioxide emission standards for coal-fired electric generating facilities. And we have Ms. Kate, good morning, how you doing?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Lara Katz, on behalf of the New Mexico Environment Department. And NMED is here before the board today to request that the board set a public hearing on a rulemaking petition to adopt new regulations at 20.2.101 NMAC. These proposed rules would set standards for emissions of carbon dioxide full-fired electric generating facilities with an original installed capacity exceeding 300 megawatts. This is a mandatory rulemaking pursuant to an amendment to Section 7425 of the Air Quality Control Act that was part of the Energy Transition Act, which was passed by the legislature in 2019. So specifically, Section 7425B 1B mandates that the board promulgate, quote, "standards of performance" that limit carbon dioxide emissions to no more than 1,100 pounds per megawatt hour on and after January 1, 2023. So the statute specifies the emission standard and the date upon which it must become effective, and the date upon which the facilities that are subject must comply. So the department has filed this petition with the board to assist the board in carrying out its mandatory duty under that provision of the Air Quality Control Act. The statement of reason summarizes the provisions of the proposed rule, which include the statutorily specified standard of performance as well as monitoring, record-keeping, and reporting requirements that are necessary to implement and enforce the standards set by the statute. The timeline that the department is proposing for the rulemaking is intended to ensure that the rules can be in effect by January 1, 2023, as required by the statute. So the department is requesting that the board set a public hearing to begin on October 26, 2022, and appoint a hearing officer to oversee those proceedings. We estimate that the hearing will take approximately two days and that the board can deliberate directly after the hearing if it wishes. The department is also asking the board to set a schedule for submission of prefiled written technical testimony with direct testimony due by September 14, 2022, and rebuttal technical testimony due by October 12, 2022. I've included that's the
I apologize, Ms. Katz. I think your internet had a little breakup. Did others hear that too, or was that just me?
Yeah, everybody, when all the video went out for me on this end. So I think it was around when I just said that this is the department's request and I'm happy to answer questions from the board.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Katz, I appreciate you, your address this morning. And yes, Member Honker.
Yeah, Ms. Katz, I'm just curious, do you know what the universe is of facilities that would be subject to this rule?
At this point, there's only one, and that is the San Juan Generating Station.
Okay, well, I thought that might be the case. Just curious, since this is something prescribed in the statute, and there's one facility it would apply to, and I believe they're proposing to cease operation fairly soon. Why does the department think it's going to take two days to do this hearing? I'm just curious.
We believe that there are, well, I guess that is actually probably something that needs addressed by the other parties because there are going to be other parties to this rulemaking. We do understand that there is Enchant and the City of Enchant Energy and the City of Farmington are becoming the main owners, taking over from PNM in September. And I do believe that they are, would like to keep the facility open and comply with the standard via carbon capture technology. And so that is, I believe, what the, why we think that we need to, the hearing is going to be more than a sort of perfunctory administrative function. And, but again, I'll let the other parties, because to address the specifics and the substance of their participation.
Okay, that's very helpful, thanks.
Thank you, Member Honker. Do any other members have any questions of Ms. Katz? All right. So thank you for answering Member Honker's question. I don't have any other questions, it seems pretty straightforward. And thank you for the clarification of why two days is being requested. So with that, members, on table here, the request by NMED legal counsel is for a hearing, hearing date, and also the schedule. Does what NMED presented, does that look feasible to you, looking at schedules and so forth? Or if there's any other questions you might have about the details? So please look at your calendars.
Madam Chair, I believe one party that I've seen has filed their entry. I believe they're represented by Mr. Rose, and he's here. I just wanted to give him an opportunity. If they want to add anything for the board's knowledge, they don't have to. But if we want to give them an opportunity.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Laria, and I appreciate that. I was trying to look here on my little screen. Mr. Rose, did you want to add anything or share anything with the board at this time?
The only thing to add is that in response to Member Honker's question, the, and I think Ms. Katz alluded to it, PNM will, well, their interest in the facility will be abandoned come September. But under the way that the agreement for the plant operates, ownership would eventually result be Farmington. So after PNM abandons their interest, and there's a couple of current owners that will also abandon their interest at the same time, PNM will be, or Farmington will become 100% owner of the facility. And they've entered an agreement with Enchant Energy so that at that point, Enchant will own 95% of the plant and Farmington will still own five. So the process, the plant won't shut down in September, it will continue to operate. And I think that's what Ms. Katz was alluding to in terms of the need to go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. And before I get to the hearing officer, Vice Chair Trujillo Davis, I see that you have a question.
Yes, I just wanted to, just a point of clarification. Mr. Rose, are you saying that the City of Farmington will become an owner as well?
The City of Farmington already owns not 5% of the facility. After the other entities abandon their interests, they'll become 100% owner. And at that, once that transfer occurs, then the agreement with Enchant will apply and they will still retain a 5% ownership interest in the plant. So yes, it's the city that's, that's the, is a current owner or will remain an owner of the facility.
Thank you for that clarification, that's all I had.
Thank you, Vice Chair Trujillo Davis and Mr. Rose, for your answer and response. And I see Hearing Officer also has his hand up, yes.
Good morning, Chair Sweeney and Board members. May I make a suggestion when it comes to scheduling the hearing in this matter? If you are considering appointing me as a hearing officer, and I'd be more than happy to take on that role, may I suggest another way of scheduling this would be to issue an order of appointment and granting the petition for the rulemaking and then allow the hearing officer, in conjunction with the parties, through a scheduling conference to come up with a two-day hearing schedule so that the issues are understood fully and that my calendar is considered as long as we meet the deadline. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer, appreciate that input and that suggestion. Members of the board, do you have any thoughts or discussion on this? Yes, Member Garcia?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a question for Mr. Rose, if I may. I'm just curious, if the hearing is set, is, are you all planning to oppose the regulations? Or oppose part of them or all of them? Or could you give me an idea of how much opposition there's going to be?
Yes. The, at least at this point, Enchant and Farmington will be supportive of the proposed rules. We commented on the draft with the department. In essence, there's already a current new source performance standard for these facilities. And this proposal tracks that and would apply to existing facilities. So at this point, we don't see opposite. There certainly isn't likely to be opposition from my clients. But I think Ms. Katz alluded to, there are others who may not want to see the facility continue to operate. And so, given the debate that's happened in front of the PRC, I think is why we anticipate that there'll be public interest in going forward with this.
Thank you, sir, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Rose and Member Garcia for your question. So with that, you know, I know there's a little bit of, you know, we're just starting out this process, Mr. Rose. And Ms. Katz, do you think there would be the potential of it getting, needing longer than two days? Or is two days seem like an initial good target?
It seems, and from our perspective, two days will probably be more than enough. But the department has a better handle on what opposition might occur and what the public interest is. So I think we concur that two days ought to be sufficient to handle it. The emission limit is drafted into the statute, so that shouldn't be a question. It's really, as Ms. Katz alluded to, the record keeping, the monitoring, record-keeping, reporting requirements that may be at issue.
Yes, Madam Chair, I don't believe, I don't see why we couldn't do this within two days. It's a pretty straightforward rule. I do think there will be public interest and the need for that participation. But the rule itself, straightforward, like Mr. Rose said, the standard is set in the statute. And so I don't expect that it should take longer than two days.
Okay, okay, just trying to get our minds around the complexity, you know, initially as it was presented this morning. It seemed pretty straightforward. But I understand that there are stakeholders and we want to make sure that we give that process and walk through the process appropriately. Yes, Vice Chair Trujillo Davis?
I'm just curious, and I was, I apologize, I looked through my notes, but I don't see it in here. Do we have anybody besides Mr. Rose and his client that have filed this party to this? I don't believe so, Madam Vice Chair, that's the only entry I've seen. And I think that's probably the only one we could expect, but I will leave that up to the department to address. But at this point, no, that's it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for that clarification. And so I just want to go back to the department. Ms. Katz, I know in the submitted request, the department also requests that the board appoint a hearing officer. And so with that, is it appropriate? I know we've had hearing officers where a board member has served as a hearing officer. I know for the more complicated ones, like our, the, some of the more recent hearings that were pretty extensive, we had a hearing officer appointed. So I just want to, you know, maybe go back to the department, since it seems pretty straightforward. Would it be just efficient for a board member to be a hearing officer? Or just love to hear your thoughts on that?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Yes, this one, I believe, is a very straightforward rulemaking that, and particularly since the board has been through several, many proceedings and some very complicated rulemakings, as we all know. I do think that this one could be handled by a board member if they wished. It should be very straightforward.
Thank you, Ms. Katz, I appreciate that. Input, Board members, do you have any questions regarding Ms. Katz's response? And then, I'm sorry, my screen.
Madam Chair, if I may, I just would also point out that I don't believe there's going to be, there's going to be a need for, and we haven't asked for post-hearing filings and submittals. I believe this is one that the board can deliberate right after the hearing. So again, there's less need to have a hearing officer to compile a report in this matter. So that would be another reason why a board member could conduct the proceedings as a hearing officer.
Thank you for that clarification, apologize, I got to unmute there. And Ms. Laria, just looking to you two, knowing some of the complexities and, you know, and/or the, this process could, what are your thoughts as well?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. I think, as alluded to by NMED counsel, this is, given the nature of this rulemaking and the statutory mandate, I do think it's well within one of the board members' capabilities to serve as hearing officer for this matter. I also think, logistically, since the anticipation is that the board would deliberate immediately at the close of the hearing, a quorum of the board would have to attend the hearing anyway to make that vote affect, to affect that vote. So your, every, a quorum attendance is required anyway, so it kind of makes sense to have, just have a hearing officer appointed from the board membership. And again, as Ms. Katz stated, there doesn't have to be any, for this one, there doesn't have to be any post-hearing write-up prepared. So I think, given the representations by the department and the nature of the rulemaking, I would support, should the board, should one of the board members want to volunteer, I think that that's appropriate here.
Thank you, Ms. Solaria. So I'm looking to the members of the board. Yes, Member Bitzer?
I want to nominate someone who hasn't actually done one before, so they can get their training wheels off. And this one sounds pretty straightforward. Madam Vice Chair, have you done this before?
Yes, I have, I got, I can't remember which one I did, but I got the pleasure of doing that last summer. So I would definitely volunteer to take it, but my October is a little questionable right now.
Looking at Member Garcia, I'm wondering if I can nominate her.
Yes, Member Garcia?
Yes, I would be happy to take that on, be the hearing officer for that particular one, sure.
Thank you, Member Garcia. And Member Honker, yes, I know you have a comment.
Yeah, I just, I want to go back to something Mr. Rose said in that there may be other parties who who have, who are not in favor of seeing that plant remain, to remain operating. And I'm just wondering if there could be some procedural angles on this, since you're going to have a variety of parties with different interests. Just, I guess I'll ask Counsel Solaria. I'm just wondering if there may be some complexities come up with motions or something that us as non-professional hearing officers would have a little difficulty dealing with.
That's a great question, Member Honker, and I will defer to other counsel on the line, of course, to offer their input. I do think, again, relying on the nature of this rulemaking, that it's statutorily mandated. There's just kind of not a lot of gray, as much gray areas we've seen in some of our other more complex rulemakings that should such a challenge be posed, I don't think it would be, you know, insurmountable for one of you all to address with my assistance. I just don't see, I just don't anticipate that. But again, if I'm missing something, oh, counsel, please chime in. But I do think that we would be able to address any sort of challenge of that nature. And of course, Member Garcia, if she volunteers, she wouldn't be going solo. I would be there to assist her in addressing any of these potential motions.
Great, in that case, I thank Member Garcia for volunteering.
Thank you, Member Honker, appreciate that discussion. Yes, Member Garcia?
Yes, we ought to make sure that that date works for everyone and we'll have a quorum that day. You're probably about to do that, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Garcia, great suggestion. And I was worried when Vice Chair Trujillo Davis said her October might be busy. Yeah, and just again, oh, there's Member, Member, Member Kate, thank you, member. So great, just in time, we're looking at our schedules, just to bring you up to speed. We are on Agenda Item Number Five. We're discussing in the matter of proposed new regulation 20.2.101 regarding NMAC carbon dioxide emission standards for coal-fired generating, electric generating facilities. So we're trying to figure out, Member Garcia, right now, we haven't done an official motion, but Member Garcia has been volunteered and accepted to be the hearing officer for this item. And so we're just looking at our calendars right now. So the department has proposed a hearing in October. And so just starting to look at our calendars. Is there any concern about October? I'm trying to look at my calendar as well.
Chair Sweeney, if you're asking me, I'm available, I'm good.
Great. Member Bitzer, thumbs up. Member Garcia, Member Honker, thumbs up. And Member, or Vice Chair Trujillo Davis, great, I think that's great. So I think we're good, Member Garcia, with that. And so it looks like, based upon what NMED has presented to facilitate the hearing process, there will be prefiled direct testimony due on September 14, 2022, and prefiled rebuttal testimony due October 12, with a public hearing to begin on October 26, for two days. So that'll be October 26 and 27. And then just to really, I guess for Member Kate's, one thing that was noted by legal counsel Solaria is that we would need a quorum if we wanted to deliberate immediately after. And based upon some of the discussions this morning, it seemed to be a pretty straightforward process and hearing, not like what we had last year around the fall time. But that there will be definitely other stakeholders or other parties present that won't. that won't, might be at the hearing. Yes, Legal Counsel Solaria.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to ask the department real quick if they have a position on the format of this hearing. We could settle that later on, but if you wanted to share that, your thoughts on that with the board while we're here.
Thanks, Counsel Solaria. I, I think it should be just pretty standard where, you know, the department presents its testimony on the petition, on the rule, on the proposed rule. And then the, the parties would then present their technical testimony. It, it'll be, it'll be the same format, just far, like we did for, say, those end rules, just far more truncated and far fewer parties.
Not interrupt you, Counsel Katz, I, I should have been more specific. Do we want to do this via online or a hybrid? Yeah, looking for, sorry, that was, I was a little bit general with that question.
Sorry, yeah, no, that's fine, I, I might have missed the surrounding discussion. That, I, I think that's up to the board. I do think that it, if it's in, if there's an in-person, there needs to be a hybrid component for, for parties to attend. So I, I don't, the department doesn't have any specific desire one way or the other on that, or recommendation one way or the other. I think it's up to the board, taking into account potentially, I don't, I don't know what pandemic status might be as we're heading into the fall. So, so I, I would leave that ultimately to the board's discretion, and certainly the department will assist in making sure that we have whatever venues we need, both virtual and in-person, to, to carry that forward.
Thank you for that discussion, that's helpful. So it sounds like whether or not we do in-person, we'll still need that hybrid component. Just making sure that we have us, whereas inclusivist and precipit, you know, that folks can participate as, as much as possible. Is that helpful, Ms. Solaria? Yes, Member Keys.
So, I'm sorry if I missed this earlier, but so are, are we talking about, so the effect of this rule would be fairly, you know, in some ways to be fairly localized, right? And we're talking about, trying to think, think of where the coal-fired power plants in New Mexico, there's one in Farmington. And is that, is that it now? Right? Does anybody know?
Yeah, we had that question earlier, and that's, that's the one that's existing at the current time.
Okay. Okay, so, and you know, as it relates, Chair Swina, as it relates to, you know, the form of the meeting, having those folks come way down here, that would be, you know, it's like three and a half hour drive. So, you know, as, as inclusive, you know, whatever format is as inclusive as possible is, is what I would favor. Thank, thank you.
Thank you, and apologize, as my, my dad and my son, I hadn't seen them for a while. So apologize for that little brief interruption. But yes, you, you clarified it very well, Member, Member Keys.
Madam Chair, if I may just respond, that, that Member Keys's point is very well taken. And one thing that the department can, has done in other proceedings is both to, you know, the virtual can provide a, a way for those who aren't close by to participate, but also we have field offices. In the event there are folks in those communities that don't have sufficient access technologically to be able to attend virtually, we, we've set up our field offices to equip with the technology and the ability, so that if there are people that want to participate, they can come to the field office and use that technology, and the department would help facilitate that. So we would definitely do that in, in this, in this case as well.
Thank you for that. Yes, Member Bitzer.
It brings up an interesting point. Could we have our hearing, the live component, in Farmington?
Yes, Member, Legal Counsel Solaria, I think you have.
I, I was just going to offer it to the board. There's no, there's no prohibition either way where you want to hold the hearing, it's really up to the board. I think, you know, the locality at issue, that it's participation is, that point was well taken, as Member Kate brought up, but there's no, there's no requirement that you have it in Farmington or Santa Fe, or Albuquerque. It's, it's where the board prefers. For my part, judging from some of the comments that were made, I do think that it would be prudent to anticipate this being some sort of hybrid hearing in any case. And wherever the board decides where it wants to physically set the hearing is really up to the board. Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Solaria. Do, do any of the board members have any que, comments, questions? Yes, Member Honker.
Yeah, I, I'm just guessing, if, if we say it's gonna be a hybrid format, and then if at the last minute, there's a big surge in the pandemic or something, I guess we could all, we could all get on remotely anyway. So it seems like that's, that's got some flexibility.
Thank you, Member Honker. Yes, Vice Chair Trujillo Davis.
I do, I do think that, uh, uh, Member Bits are brought up a, a good point, and I think there's some value to considering, you, you know, the, where this is going to have an effect in the, in that, in the Farmington community and at holding a hearing there. So I, I think there's some value in that.
Thank you, Vice Chair Trujillo Davis. Any other, yes, Member Garcia.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just one question, I might be jumping the gun a little bit. This is a question for our Counsel Solaria. I understand that there's opposition to the power plant continuing to function, but that's really outside the scope of this hearing and wouldn't really be something we would be debating during the hearing, correct?
Yes, Madam, Member Garcia, I, I would agree with that. Again, this rulemaking is mandated by statute, and it would operate regardless of, of that, that viewpoint existing. So, yeah, that would be my position as well.
Thank you, Member Garcia and Ms. Solaria for that clarification. Yeah, so it looks like, you know, one, I think we're pretty set on our hearing officer. And it looks like we're pretty set on the dates. And it sounds like through discussion, yes, Member Honker.
Yeah, just a thought, I would guess if, if we wanted to try to schedule the in-person in Farmington, it would probably take Pam or somebody some time to see whether that was feasible. So it seems in terms of a motion today, we could just say in a hybrid format without stating location and determine that before the public, before the public notice goes out for the hearing. And is that, is that a reasonable way to proceed?
Yes, thank you, Member Honker, you are reading my mind.
And, and Chair Swina, I, I agree with Member Honker's proposal, I think that's a sound approach at this point.
Thank you, Member Honker, yes. And, and also for Pam, does that sound good, Pam? I know you're, you're behind-the-scenes logistics, so I see a not hidden on, thank you. And I saw Counsel Rose, I saw you pop back on the video, did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
No, I think I was gonna raise the issue that Member Honker did, that you have to resolve this before you send your public notice out. So that's really the, the time constraint to do that. I think we're flexible either way, whether it's hybrid with in-person being in Santa Fe or in Farmington, that's up to the board, but I think we, we can participate either way. It's just that you need to make sure that you give the public notice of how that's gonna play out in the notice itself. So, and I think, I think it, it's what, thirty days before the, given the deadline for prefile, direct, and rebuttal, it obviously needs to be published sometime in either August or the first week in September before that September deadline occurs. So you need to resolve that fairly quickly, but not immediately.
Thank you, Mr. Rose, appreciate that. And we're always making sure we, we hit those milestones and deadlines and, and so forth. I do see a hand raised, yes, I think that's, yes, Ms. Hearing Officer.
I'm not involved in this matter, but it would be a sixty-day deadline to publish the notice, since it is a rulemaking.
Thank you for that clarification, appreciate that. All right, so with that, I, I think we've got some clarity, at least on most of the items, and in terms of the actual location of in-person using a hybrid approach, that's, the details still will be worked out. So I love, Member Honker, your recommendation, would you mind putting that officially in a, in a motion? Yes, Ms. Solaria.
Madam Chair, just for the sake of efficiency, I would propose that there be one vote to appoint Member Garcia as the hearing officer for a hybrid hearing as one vote. And then the second vote could be to, to adopt the proposed notice that the department submitted, because that contains the dates regarding testimony.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I'll move, we, we're to make Member, or Member Garcia, the hearing officer.
For a hybrid hearing.
I'm sorry, for a hybrid hearing, I move that we make Member Garcia the hearing officer.
Thank you, Member Bitzer.
I will second that.
Thank you, Vice Chair Trujillo Davis, for your second. If there's no further discussion on that, Ms. Jones, would you please do a real call vote?
Yes, Member Bitzer, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Member Kate, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Honker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo Davis?
Yes.
Chair Swina?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, appreciate that. So I'm looking for another motion regarding the dates that were presented today. Yes, Member Honker?
Yes, I will move that we accept the petition from the department in the matter of proposed new regulations for carbon dioxide emission standards for coal-fired electric generating facilities, that we schedule a hybrid hearing to begin October twenty-sixth and including the prefiled testimony deadlines that are in the department's petition.
Thank you, Member Honker.
Second that.
Thank you, Member Bitzer, for your second. And Ms. Solaria, just one real quick check, does that sound good? Yes, thumbs up. All right, Ms. Jones, would you please do a real call vote on Member Honker's motion?
Member Bitzer, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Member Kate?
Yes.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Honker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo Davis?
Yes.
Chair Swina?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, appreciate that, and thank you for everybody's input. That was a very good conversation on this item, appreciate the presentation. Thank you. Yes, Member Honker?
Yeah, one, one more question. So if, if the, if there's a sixty-day public notice requirement, then that would be by August twenty-sixth or so. Just checking to see if that's after our August meeting.
It looks like it's on the day, August twenty-sixth.
Well, that, that would be a little late to make a decision. So I would suggest that, that Pam investigate the, the feasibility of doing a hybrid hearing in Farmington, and perhaps we can all communicate by email before the, the deadline for the public notice and try to reach agreement or consensus via email prior to the, the, the deadline for the public notice.
Thank you, Madam Chair, if I may, I apologize for putting in here, but the, this notice actually has to be published in the New Mexico Register. And so to meet the sixty-day deadline, so the, the volume that it needs to be published in would be published on August twenty-third, and the notice would need to be submitted by August eleventh. So the board would have until August eleven to make that determination and put it into the notice that we then submit to the register.
Thank you, thank you for that, that's very important information. So, Ms. Jones, does that give you some time to look at the logistics of the two sides or that are, have been discussed, one in Farmington and the one, I think, Santa Fe you're pretty good with, but I guess the logistics in Farmington, if it was to be in person there, would that give you enough time?
Yes, I'll get started on it right away.
Okay, and so then, therefore, Ms. Solaria, the logistics of maybe firming up that date, is there a protocol or process that we need to make sure? I don't want to do, you know, make any missteps on this with something that's not public if we're on an email or anything like that.
Yes, Madam Chair, I can work with Pam and I'll communicate with you. It, it sounds to me that there wasn't opposition to having it in Farmington, so that if that works out, then that will be where we will have it. And the board, board members who, that, where that's not feasible, they have the option of, of participating remotely. I will say, if there is a strong preference, I think the board should express it now so that we take that into consideration when we, when we publish the notice. But it sounds like the board was, because of the hybrid option, that the board was fine with either. So I will work with Pam to secure a Farmington location if that's possible. And then if it's not, then we will work something else out. But we will have that settled before the notice deadline.
Thank you, Ms. Solaria, and I just want to look to Member Garcia. I, I know you're the hearing officer that has been selected for this one, and I just want to make sure we get your input as well.
Yes, either place would be fine with me, I can go to Farmington if necessary.
Thank you, Member Garcia, wonderful. And any other members, you know, to Ms. Solaria's point, do you have any, you know, major input or leanings? Member Honker?
Yeah, I just, during my professional career with EPA, we did a lot of public hearings, and we always did it in the area impacted by the, the permit or rule or whatever it was. So I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of Farmington if we can work it out.
Thank you, Member Honker. Yes, Member Bitzer?
A motion authorizing Ms. Jones to pursue Farmington and, and choose it and notice it, if practical, be appropriate at this time?
That, you can propose that motion, Member Bitzer, that's fine.
So I would move that we instruct and authorize Ms. Jones to determine and publicly notice the location of the hearing, of the physical part of the hearing, with a, a bias towards. With a, a bias towards Farmington if practical.
Thank you, Member Bitzer, for your motion. Yes. Member Garcia?
Second that motion.
Thank you. And I just want to make sure, Ms. Solaria, does that seem, did we miss anything on that?
That, that was a fine motion.
Okay, thank you so much. With that, thank you, Member Bitzer. Ms. Jones, would you mind doing a roll call vote on that motion, just so we have it documented?
Yes, Member Bitzer, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Member Kate?
Yes.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Honker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo Davis?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney? Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Appreciate that. And, and just double checking that there's no other discussion on this item, looking at our councils here. So with that, I just want to thank legal counsel for NMEB. And thank you so much for your presentation and your presence and your input this morning. Appreciate that. So with that, we'll go on to agenda item number six. EIB 22-12, 22-15, 22-18, 22-19, 22-20. Tows consolidated in the matter of appeal petitions for permit number GCP relocation RE018925. Discussion with our hearing officer this morning. So, Mr. Hearing Officer, can you, for, can you repeat your, your last name? I don't want to keep getting it wrong.
Chakalian.
Chakalian, okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Chakalian, Hearing Officer. The floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Gregory Chakalian. I was appointed to be the hearing officer in these five consolidated matters on June 21st. By order of hearing determination, consolidation, and hearing officer appointment, signed by the vice chair. It is my practice to quickly schedule a pre-hearing conference whenever I am appointed as a hearing officer, so that I can learn of the scope of the hearing. And I can decide how far in advance the parties are going to file their pre-hearing technical testimony, their rebuttal testimony, motion practice, and just set expectations amongst all the parties. In this case, we have five petitioners who are pro se litigants. We have the department and we have the asphalt company. In reading through the New Mexico Environment Department's second amended answer to the appeal petitions, which was filed on June 6th, several weeks before I was appointed. And trying to come up to speed on, on the complexity of these issues. I saw that Mr. V Hill on page two of his second amended answer wrote the following, "The grounds for the objections raised in the petitions are without legal merit." And I thought, well, what does he mean by that? He also wrote on page one, "Petitioners raise no grounds on which the Environmental Improvement Board could reasonably reverse the department's decision to approve a relocation." So in my legal mind, I'm thinking that this is something like what we call a demure or a 12B6 motion by a party. Sure, it's a answer, but it basically raises the objection that there's no way this should go forward because there's no matter of law here within the EIB's purview to reverse the department's decision to approve a relocation. So reading his answer closely, on page two, he says the following, "This matter concerns a relocation of a portable source under a general permit pursuant to," and unfortunately, he cites the wrong regulation. But I found that the correct regulation, it's 20.2.72.202 subsection D3A and MAC, and is therefore exempt from the requirement of a permit revision. The relocation was registered under the general permit pursuant to 20.2.72.220 subsection C and MAC. Therefore, there was no public notice or participation requirement for this action. And then he cites to subsection C4, and he quotes it stating that, quote, "The department may grant or deny an application to register under a general construction permit without repeating the public notice and participation procedures required under another part of the rule," unquote. Now, this is important because in reading the petitions, all of the petitions are objecting to the public notice. Defects that they claim, alleged, are in the public notice. So that's important. Furthermore, he says, "Because this matter involves the relocation and registration of a portable source under a general permit, the EIB review of this permit is limited to whether or not the portable source in this matter qualifies for registration under the general permit." And he cites to section C5 of the same rule. And he quotes it stating that review by the EIB is only available, quote, "for a determination made by the department of whether or not a source qualifies to register for coverage under a general construction permit." Period. However, administrative review of a registration for coverage under a general construction permit shall not extend to the administrative review of the general permit itself. So the regulation that this board passed. And as the law in this case severely limits the review in this matter. And by my reading of it, it's a legal matter. Again, for a determination made whether or not a source qualifies to register for coverage under a general construction permit. Now, we have an administrative record in which all of the evidence that could answer that question exists. So in thinking about the second amended answer, and by the way, the asphalt plant filed no answer to this. "A few days after I was appointed, I filed an order of briefing. And as the hearing officer, it's my authority under the rule, and I'm citing to 20.1.2.109 subsection B2. One of my critical functions as a hearing officer is to simplify the issues or expedite the proceedings." So in my reading of the answer and the petitions, I filed an order of briefing. And my order of briefing was very simple. It cited to my authority and it said, "The purpose of a public hearing is to gather relevant and admissible evidence for the EIB's consideration in adjudicating the legal issue raised in the appeal petition." The second amended answer raises the legal question of whether the public hearing is necessary to resolve a factual issue before the EIB and the scope of any such public hearing. I then cited to the same rules that Mr. V Hill cited too. And I ordered the parties to submit briefing on or before July 12th on the following two issues. One, whether an evidentiary hearing, an evidentiary hearing is necessary. And B, if it is necessary, what are the specific factual issues in contention? In response, I received nothing from the asphalt company, even though he had entered an appearance. And he received this order, so he ignored the order. Mr. V Hill basically regurgitated what he said in the second amended answer. And over and over again, repeated the same rule in answer to, answered to, I'm not sure what he was answering, because I didn't ask him to answer anything except for these two questions. And the petitioners, not being lawyers, I give them extra leeway, but I do hold them to a standard. They basically did, they didn't do anything what I asked. They basically kept saying, well, the public notice was, was, there was a defect in the public notice. So there was no legal authority to answer any of these two questions, whether we needed a hearing at all. And B, what are the factual issues in the hearing? So with that in mind, I bring this to the board's attention because you have scheduled a hearing for August 10. I don't believe there should be a hearing on August 10 in this matter. I'm not sure that there should be a hearing at all in this matter. I'm not sure whether or not petitioners have raised any grounds for a hearing. I know their petitions were granted, but I'm not sure under what legal authority it was granted. Because if we do go to a hearing, I have no idea what issues we're going to be hearing and how that evidence would be relevant based on the rules that I read to you and that were in my order of briefing and that were in the answer. So with this in mind, I come to you with a recommendation. My recommendation is that we delay the hearing from August 10 to another date. I believe that a sanction is in order. That would be the sanction. Petitioners have a right to have a hearing within a certain amount of time, as long as they raise legal issues that can be adjudicated by the EIB. But I'm not sure they have. Mr. V Hill doesn't believe they have. I believe that the asphalt company should be ordered to respond to my order of briefing, since they haven't. I think I would benefit from understanding their perspective. And this may either be simply a dismissal by the board if there are no legal grounds to hear this petition. Or this may just be a legal argument where no new evidence is taken at all. Because as I read the rule to the board members a moment ago, any review is on a very specific issue under that rule. It is not based on what the petitioners are arguing this hearing should be about. So with that in mind, I turn the floor back over to you, Chair Sweeney.
Thank you for that presentation to our board. Appreciate the, the time you took to go through all of those very detailed back and forth and comments. With that, I'm, I'm going to also look to, I know there's been a, a lot shared. And so at this point, first, I'm going to look to the board to see if you have any questions of, of Mr. Hearing Officer. Before we look to some of the other folks that stakeholders regarding this particular item, the counsel, V Hill, and the petitioners. So I just want to, before we start down that road, look to our board members, seeing if you have any questions, comments. And I'm looking at Member Garcia. Yes.
Officer, and thank you, Hearing Officer Chakalian, for that information. I would be very interested in hearing from our counsel, Solaria, on her opinion on, on his recommendation.
Thank you, Member Garcia. Ms. Solaria?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I do have a, a couple of questions. I, I'm not sure that I agree with the characterization of the party's response to Hearing Officer Chakalian's briefing order on a number of points. First, to me, it appears that the department has conceded that there are factual issues to be determined through a hearing. That was apparent to me in their filing where they state that the following allegations regarding public notice and participation do have factual issues that could be resolved by the hearing at, by the hearing officer at a hearing. So while I, I understand the department has relied on the fact that the certain notice provisions of the general construction permit don't have to be repeated for the issuance of a relocation, an application to relocate. I believe there's a separate notice at play, the 15 day notice for the relocation, which is what is the subject of this, the factual allegations. And, and I assume, Madam Chair, that you'll give the party's representatives the chance to address that. But I'm just kind of offering my general overview at this point. So that's one observation. The second observation is the one I think that's a little more complicated. And I think is up for due deliberation by the board is, and that is as to whether any proper factual issues have been raised as to the issuance of this registration itself. The petitioners, I think, have fairly articulated in their petitions and in their response to the hearing officer's order that they believe that the registration would not comply with the conditions of the general construct, construction permit. Which is kind of a theme we have seen in past matters where the board has issued a hearing. Fact evidence was taken on that issue and the board decided upon those facts. So I know for two specific issues, they've alleged that, that this site would in fact not comply with the emissions standards of the general permit. And then there was another issue which had to do with, I think, fugitive dust with the water source. And, and therefore, this source would not comply. The party, the department is free to attack that as not legally sufficient. And I think the board should, should hear them out on that. But to Hearing Officer Chakalian's point about this being essentially, this board construing this as a potential, the answer is a potential motion to dismiss or a 12B6 motion. That analysis does require that, that the board review the facts in the light most favorable to the petitioners. So I'll leave it at that. Those are my observations. I, I do kind of disagree on the, some of the details there about what was represented in the party's response to the hearing officer's order. And I do think that the board would benefit from hearing from Mr. V Hill and the petitioners.
Thank you, Ms. Solaria. And Member Garcia, does that help a little?
Yes, thank you very much, Ms. Solaria.
Thank you so much. And before we go on to any other parties, I want to look to Vice Chair Trujillo Davis. I know you had your hand up.
Yes, thank you. I just had a question of clarification for Mr. Chakalian. I, I was wondering on your recommendations, the, the third recommendation you mentioned was to require the asphalt company to respond. And I'm, I'm curious, since the, since they, they weren't, they've been fairly quiet on the issue in there. They weren't, what am I asking? I'm sorry. I'm trying to phrase this correctly here. But I'm, I'm just curious what you hope to gain from their response, since they, they weren't, they, they haven't made any particular complaints against the, the petitioners allegations? Or, or actually, they've been fairly quiet. So I'm just kind of curious what, what you hope to gain from a required response from them.
Thanks for the question. Well, first of all, when a hearing officer is appointed and files an order that the parties do something and they don't do it, that's a problem. And the attorney for the asphalt company was here during the last meeting, attended the last meeting, entered an appearance for the party. This is the party that holds the permit, the general permit. for the party. This is the party that holds the permit, the general permit, and has a stake in what happens in this. So whether or not they have been somewhat silent during the proceedings is really neither here nor there when it comes to the order of the hearing officer. I have to understand the issues going to hearing. If I don't understand the issues going to hearing, the hearing is going to be a mess. I have to understand the here, the issues because I have to decide in my capacity as a hearing officer, what is relevant, what is not relevant, how long the party's witnesses will have to testify, whether they will be summarizing their direct prefiled testimony, what are the dates that prefiled testimony has to be filed, whether it's going to be rebuttal testimony. All this matters when you're the hearing officer. And if you don't understand the basic issues, and Mr. V Hill did raise in his response, I will mention that Mr. V Hill did say in his NMED response to the order, he said the following. None, and this is on page two, top of page two, first full paragraph, and, and I say this because of Counsel Solaria's quoting the last sentence in this. None of the substantive technical allegations raised by the petitioners can succeed as a matter of law. Then he says, however, the following allegations regarding public notice and participation do have factual issues that could be resolved by a hearing officer. What he doesn't say here is how these allegations regarding public notice and participation are connected to the matters at law that he says none can be, can succeed. So in reading the whole paragraph and in reading the entire answer that he filed several weeks before this brief that I ordered him to file to help clarify the issues, you have to take the sentences together as opposed to just hearing one sentence by itself. Sure, there's lots of factual matters that could be resolved by hearing, but are they relevant? Are they relevant to the legal issues? And as he says, none of them can succeed. So in my, in my duty as a hearing officer to this board, to not waste your time and resources, I ordered the parties to file briefs to help me understand. Had they done this, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be here before you today. But one party ignored it completely. The other parties didn't provide any legal reasoning at all. They just regurgitated their factual allegations. They didn't tell me how that was relevant to this, to the rule I read you before that limits the scope of the hearing to a particular question. So I hope that answers your question.
Oh, Vice Chair Triglio Davis?
Yes, thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Yes, Member Garcia.
Uh, I mean, Madam Chair. I have a question and either or both Mr. Chakalian and Ms. Solaria can answer this possibly is if we were to go forward with the hearing based on factual issues that the petitioners have brought up and then make a decision, would that decision be challenged in, later in court perhaps because the legal matter had not been adjudicated properly?
If I'm understanding your question correctly, Member Garcia, it's, is if we were to to decide this issue without a hearing, that, whether that decision could be challenged?
Uh, no ma'am, I'm, I'm saying if we were to go forward with a hearing and, and, and make a decision in this matter and the legal questions that have been raised were not resolved, the legal questions that Mr. V Hill raised were not resolved, does that present a problem by us making a decision?
Right. Well, let me frame it this way. The department has raised a defense as a matter of law to having certain allegations of the petitioners heard via hearing. Their position is that there's no, that there's no way that the petitioners alleging the facts that they've alleged can succeed as a matter of law and therefore the hearing should be, should not go forward on those issues. If we were to go forward on this, those, those issues, then yes, in theory, the department could raise a procedural objection that, that those were improperly, the, the EIB improperly proceeded with a hearing. I'm not gonna opine on how successful that kind of challenge would be because at that point a record would have been created and I'm, I think a court, you know, a court hearing that on appeal would be somewhat loathe to state that the board should have just granted the 12B6 mo, or the motion to dismiss. That's, that's an unusual. That would be unusual, I think, for a court to do it that procedural, of a case with that procedural posture, but it's not impossible to answer your question. So yeah, either, either, either party could challenge the decision for the board to not have a hearing or to have a hearing. That's, that is within their, that's within their right to, to challenge that. I, I will say that the board, I mean, excuse me, the department has presented, and I think we should hear from the, the department on this, but has alleged that there's no there's no colorable way for the petitioners to succeed on, on this, their issues as alleged. Again, I have read the petitions with with a view to hearing the parties out on this, that the petitioners have alleged that the specific registration would not comply with the terms of the general permit, which to me does seem like an issue upon which facts can be taken because that, a, a pursuant to the rules, a registration can only be granted by the department if the applicant will comply with the terms of the general permit. So if there is a question, a factual question as to that compliance, then to me, that looks like a factual issue to be heard and then decided upon by the board. But I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm again, reading the petition in the light most favorable to the petitioners in view of a potential motion to dismiss, which is the proper framework to look at a motion to dismiss. You know, you kind of take the party who would be adversely affected by that motion and you accept the facts in the light, light most favorable to them. So that's why I'm, I'm looking at it that way. I'm not espousing a position. But I do think it would benefit the board to hear from the parties on that issue. Because, I mean, I, I do think Hearing Officer Chakalian's point is, is well taken that if we can narrow the issues to be heard at a hearing, we should do so. But at the same time, we shouldn't be excluding claims where there is a factual issue that can be adjudicated by the board.
Thank you so much, Ms. Solaria. Does that help, Member Garcia?
Yes, thank you very much. So, so the answer I heard then is that there's not a problem with us going forward. If we were to decide to go forward with a hearing, it wouldn't be a problem to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Garcia. Thought I saw another member with their hand up. There was. Yes, Member Cates.
Well, okay. So then a question for Hearing Officer Chakalian. So the asphalt company has blown you off so far. So you're not prepared to present a case really by August 10. So then what, what is your strategy then? Would you give them a deadline? Is there some way you can compel them to respond? Is it possible to just ignore, keep ignoring your, you know, your obituaries? How, how, how would you go forward with this?
The rule contemplates sanctions that may be reviewed by the board. It's in the rule I cited too earlier, 20.1.2.109B. When a party ignores the hearing officer, a direct order from the hearing officer that, that the department did not ignore, that the petitioners who are not lawyers did not ignore. My resolution to that would be to sanction them by number one, ordering them as the board, basically backing me up and telling the asphalt company's counsel, you file a brief, a legal brief showing, answering these two questions that the hearing officer put to you within his authority by a certain amount of time. And we are going to delay this hearing by, let's say, one month or something like that so that I can meet with the parties after I the first, the first challenge I have is to understand the issues. Normally, normally, you know what the issues are through the petition for review and the answer. Those are generally how you understand what the issues are. But when you have such a wide variety between the petition, the petitioners who are saying A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and Counsel V Hill for the department that's saying none of those, none of those are applicable because the rule, and again, the rule is very clear. It, it couldn't be clearer under 20.2.72 220C 20C5, because this is a general construction permit. It specifically says administrative review, and that's what the board would be doing, would be conducting during a hearing under section 7427, which is the idea of, of appealing a permit granting, shall be available for a determination made by the department of whether or not a source qualifies to register for coverage under a general construction permit. So that doesn't deal with the public notice at all. That just deals with do they qualify, okay? Then it says, however, administrative review of a regulation for coverage under general construction permit shall not extend to administrative review of the permit itself. Administrative review of the general construction permit shall be available under the Air Quality Act only upon issuance or revision of the general permit as a permitting action. Well, Mr. V Hill made clear that this is not the issuance or a revision because a portable source is accepted from, in another part of the rule, the whole idea of a revision when it wants to move something that has already been granted as a general construction permit. So this is what led me to want to understand the issues more. I'm not making any final determinations because I don't have enough information. I just told the parties, give me more information. And the asphalt company decided to ignore my order, even though I gave them plenty of time and I know that they received the order and I think he's here. I think, you know, you're, you're more than welcome to ask him why he ignored a direct order from the hearing officer. But I hope that answers your question.
Well, um, yeah, I suppose it does. I, I still not getting real clarity on how to compel them to you know, work with the state and with the board here. And so I guess I would put it before Chairman, or sorry, Chair Sweeney and our counsel, you know, if there's somebody, if, if the lawyer for the asphalt company is here today on this call, would that person please come forward?
Thank you, Member Cates. And I see Mr. Romero. I know there's been a lot of discussion, Mr. Romero, and I appreciate you coming this morning to the board. And I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're respectful and we're appropriate in how we move forward on these discussion items. So I do wanna give you time and I know there's been a number of topics. But just to start out, would you mind addressing Member Kate's question?
Yes. Good morning, Board and Chairman. Gosh, I got some explaining to do here. Let me, and let me begin. The when I received the amended answer that, that Mr. V Hill submitted, it, in my, in my mind, and discussing this with, with, with the, the principal owner of the asphalt company, we saw this and we thought this covers every single issue that we have. Let's ride with this and see what happens. It was not a matter of disrespect. It was not a matter of, of, of taking a different angle or position. And, and I want to very much direct, direct this comment to, to Hearing Officer Chakalian. No, it's, it's not a matter of ignoring and, and, and I, and I think I may have misunderstood, misinterpreted or misunderstood the, the intent of that order not to, not as a matter of disrespecting or blowing off, to use that phrase that I heard, blowing off the board's interests and concerns about this. But when I saw the extent and competence of Mr. V Hill's response, it, it, it covers our issues. We, 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 we walk in lockstep on that, on that answer. You know that now. You didn't know that previously. I, I thought I might also just provide a trite response saying, we agree. But yeah, that, as I say, seemed to be a, a trite response to, or reaction to, to this proceeding. Getting to the issue of submitting a, an individual response, I'd be happy to do that if that would be of assistance. If, if providing the, a, a response to the issues so that Mr. Chakalian is fully informed on our position, I, I can certainly do that. I can also, if, if the board is proceeding to other factual issues on, for example, notice as well as qualification, well, we're ready to address that as well. I, I also have our consultant ready to address and provide a, the technical testimony that is presumably still due on, on, on Tuesday, next, next Tuesday. So that, that is, that will be readily available. I just wasn't sure, and you know, waiting to go through this meeting to just find out where things stood. Now, now I do know. And again, it's not a matter of ignoring or thinking everything is fine. We don't, we know everything is not fine. There are issues have been raised. I don't believe that they are, that the issues and I agree with Mr. V Hill, if I just, you know, if one applies the law. The law does not seem to allow for anything other than a dismissal in this matter. If we apply the standing law to get somewhat into the merits of our argument. Does that, I'm happy to answer any other questions, please.
Thank you, Mr. Romero. I, I know there's been some, I guess if you will, confusion and I understand in the response that it sounds like, you know, what you read in, in the Mr. V Hill's response seemed to cover what you would have said and that, that box was checked in essence. It sounds like, yes, yes. So with that, Member Cates, does that help address some of your questions?
Uh, yeah, yeah, it does. Thanks, sir. And so I think the, the goal here is to get the Hearing Officer what he needs and it sounds to me like, and everybody should be endeavoring to do that. So thank you.
Thank you, Member Cates. I, I do wanna look to Mr. Hearing Officer Chakalian. Given Mr. Romero's response, verbal response today, I, I'd love to hear your thoughts on, on his response.
My thoughts are that he was ordered to brief the issue. He's an attorney. He knows what an order means. I would like the board to delay the August 10 hearing so that Mr. Romero would comply with my order. I will then hold a pre-hearing conference with all the parties once I understand the issues that will come before the board, if any. And I may order the parties, depending on Mr. Romero's briefing, I may order the parties to address a motion to dismiss this case. I may order the parties to do something else, but I don't know yet because I haven't received the benefit of Mr. Romero's legal analysis. I do have Mr. V Hill's legal analysis. I don't have the petitioner's legal analysis at all. So really, all I have right now So really, all I have right now is one party's legal analysis that basically repeated what he said in the answer. So I already knew what Mr. V Hill was going to say. I, I, I didn't, this, the, 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 the brief in response to my order didn't elaborate in any way upon the second amended answer that he filed. It's because of his second amended answer that I ordered the parties to give me more, so that I would not waste the board's time. Because the hearing may be this big, there may not be a need for hearing at all, or it may be this big. I still don't know. So to have a hearing in, in approximately three weeks and to rush everything to get it there when I still don't understand, and I haven't had a pre-hearing conference because the parties did not comply. Well, because two out of the three parties did not give me anything to go on. That's why I'm asking the board to delay the August ten hearing and to order Mr. Romero to, to comply with the hearing officer's order, which is an extension of the board. You appoint me with the authority under the rule, and I'm supposed to act in the best interest that the rule says that I should act in. Well, if the parties don't do what I tell them to do, then I can't maintain order. I can't expedite the proceedings. I, I can't simplify the issues. I can't do anything that I'm supposed to do. So I hope that answers your question, Chair Swina.
Good, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, before any decisions are made, the department respectfully requests the opportunity to be heard, not necessarily now, but at some point. There are many, many issues that have been raised in this hearing that need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. V Hill, and thank you, Mr. Chicalian, for your response. And just trying to herd the cats here, and also respect our board members' questions and comments. And I see Member Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, is it the case that the petitioners do not have legal counsel representing them?
And let's, yes, I think the petitioners, at least one of them are here, so why don't we allow them? And I know, Mr. V Hill, I do acknowledge the department will, would like to speak and address the board as well. But really quickly, I want to also acknowledge the petitioners are on the meeting. And I see, and, yes, Kim, I think, yes. Please, please address Member Garcia's question.
Yes, thank you, Member Garcia. In terms of counsel, the petitioners did attempt to hire counsel. And we were unsuccessful due to the dockets of the qualified counsel that we reached out to. So that is the reason for our response to be from all non-lawyers and our attempts to articulate the issues as we see them and respond in a way to the hearing officer that broke down the facts that we, you know, are relevant to what we see in a way that's understandable. I understand that we did not respond in the way that the hearing officer desired in terms of our legal analysis. And, you know, if there is a delay in, in this matter, you know, may be beneficial to the petitioners as well to be able to then move and find counsel that can, that can give you an opinion to help inform that dispute.
Thank you for that. And Member Garcia, do you have any follow-up questions?
No, thank you very much. I appreciate hearing from the petitioners on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And then I do want to give Mr. V Hill also some time to adjust the board. And Mr. V Hill, the floor, cheers.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members. Let's see here. I, I agree with Counsel Soloria's characterization of the situation. I think that it's very clear what is going on. I'm not quite sure what the hearing officer is having trouble with. In my, in my pleadings, what I say is that there is no substantive issue that the board can reverse. And I'm not advocating right now, I'm just, you know, telling you what, what I'm saying. But there are factual matters with regard to the notice. And I want to, you know, and the hearing officer seems to be conflating procedural and substantive law. What I'm saying is there's no substantive law with regard to the regulations on which the board could reasonably overturn. Again, not advocating, just explaining what I'm saying. What I'm also saying is that there are some procedural matters, meaning the notice, which is a procedural, not, it's not to do with the regulations, it's not to do with air quality standards or anything like that, but pure procedural matters that, that could be addressed. And the reason why, and this is a very basic legal concept, I'm not sure, sure why this is an issue. The substantive matters are regulatory matters under law. The reason why the department says that the public notice could be heard is because in the department's view, this is a due process issue for the public. So, and I, and I've explained this in, in previous hearings, that the department has a complex role. We, in a sense, we represent everyone. We represent the petitioner. We represent the, the permutee. We represent the public at large. So we have to be mindful of these due process issues. And so that's the reason why we are saying, I, I mean, for myself, I would prefer not to have a hearing, right? We're all busy and so on and so forth. But as a matter of law and as a matter of sort of due process rights, constitutional rights, in, in our view, the petitioners do have a, a case to be made about whether or not public notice was, was complied with. So I, you know, I, I wish it wasn't the case, but they actually do have arguments, and we had to concede that. And so that's sort of our position on that. The, the second thing is that this is a, we are not here on a registration. The registration was already done, and I think it was done a couple of years ago. This is just a relocation under a registration. And so, you know, it, it's, it's very, it's, I, I don't want to say it's complicated. It's a little convoluted because they're treated differently in the rules, and you have to go back and forth. And, and it's completely understandable that the petitioners who do not yet have counsel are, are basically bringing their concerns, and they should bring it to the board. And, and the fact that they don't have everything in order with regard to, you know, whether this is a registration, relocation, they shouldn't be penalized for that. And I, and I think that, you know, this is something that could come out in, in the hearing. And I, I do want to say something about delaying the hearing. The, the, the petitioner that you heard from today is one of several petitioners. Now, it's not clear to me, and I'm not saying it's not true, whether she represents all of them. These are separate individuals who have filed separate petitions. And to my mind, unless we get some sort of written acknowledgement that, that she represents all of them, we, in order for us to delay the hearing, these, all the petitioners, whether they do it through a representative or individually, need to waive their right to the hearing, because that became an issue. They didn't want to waive their rights. If you were, if, if we're going back and, and thinking about how this got started, excuse me, there was a, there was a concern on the part of the petitioners that this asphalt, or that this facility would get up and running before we would have the hearing. And they've made that clear, that that was an issue for them. That's why we've put this on a kind of expedited timeline. So I appreciate what the hearing officer is, is saying, and I, and, and, you know, but I think he is ignoring the rights of the petitioners while kind of advocating this idea that he needs to sort of go after the petitioner because someone didn't do what he said or whatever. So I, I don't think that should be the issue here. I think the issue should be the protection of the petitioner's right to have this hearing within the time. Now, the department would agree to any kind of delay, of course. But the petitioners are going to have to waive that right, because if they don't, then again, they have an appealable issue, and we would oppose doing it, you know, we would oppose any, any extension that was not consented to by, by the, by, by the petitioners. So I, I think that covers all of the issues. I've been sort of, let's see. Yes, I think that covers all of the issues. I, I'm looking at my notes, sorry, and I'm, and I have poor eyesight, so sorry, I had to give you a, a view of my, my receding hairline. Anyway, so I do want to say one thing, and I'm going to, I, I want the board to consider what I'm saying, and it, and it's, it's, I say this sincerely and not in a retaliatory way, retaliatory way. On two different occasions today, the hearing officer used the word regurgitation. Regurgitation is a euphemism or another word, maybe it's an uptown word for valet. So what the hearing officer is saying on two different occasions today is that the department vomited the, it, it's, it's answer to his request for briefing the hearing. In my view, it's unprofessional and unnecessarily confrontational. And the hearing officer has gotten his facts wrong today, and that's, it, it's clear that he did not closely read these things. So I want the board to, I would like the board to ask the hearing officer to take a more professional tone, because I think it does really undermine confidence in his ability to adjudicate these proceedings. One, in that he uses this kind of inflammatory rhetoric. And two, that he is not, he has clearly not read these pleadings and taken the time to understand these matters in the way that he should, because the pleadings are very clear, and it is his job to go through and, and sort of understand these issues. We've had the number, a couple of attorneys come, come here and say they understood, that they understood things as they were. The hearing officer seems to not understand. I want to say another thing that's related to this. The hearing officer seeking of sanctions without hearing from the petitioner, I think, is unnecessarily aggressive and confrontational. So I just, I think it's important that we say this, and I want to get this on the record. I've said everything I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. V Hill. Appreciate your comments and, and I know this has gotten, you know, there's a lot of discussion today and different characterization of the discussions of, you know, all parties. I do want to also acknowledge, I was looking through the list of attendees, and I, and I went back to some of the filings, and I do see a hand raised here for Ms. Pomham, and I noticed another petitioner on the line. And before I get to you, Ms. Pomham, I just want to touch base really quickly with our legal counsel, Ms. Soloria, about, you know, the logistics of this. I see one, two, three, four, five petitioners. And I just want to make sure as we proceed together, all together, that we do things appropriately as well. And to Mr. V Hill's point, I don't see all of the petitioners, at least, I don't know, there's some call-in numbers. But I want to make sure we do this right. I know we, we heard from one of the petitioners. Thank you, Kim. I apologize, I, I don't know how to say your last name, so just was using your first name, but I just want to make sure that we do this appropriately. We acknowledge the petitioners and all parties as part of this, this matter. So just want to hear a little bit from you, Ms. Soloria, how we all proceed.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think I'll have more to say on this after we hear from the petitioners, but I did want to espouse the position of Mr. V Hill insofar as delaying the hearing, that we, the board is not empowered to do that without. And I would recommend in writing some sort of waiver from each and every petitioner that is filed, because the last we had all of the petitioners, we agreed on this hearing date. And so I do think it would be prejudicial to their rights if we were today to to, to continue that hearing without, without notice and input. So I did want to offer that. I do think the board at this point, it would be proper to hear from the petitioners. I think we can, I, I would like to orient their response in terms of their position on continuing the hearing. One, with the understanding that that's unlikely, given that we don't have all of the petitioners here today, or I don't see them. And two, if they have any response to the hearing officer's characterization of, of their briefs. I think that would, those two issues would benefit the board.
Thank you, Ms. Soloria. And I did get a chat along with Ms. Pomham. We have, I think, Ms. Torres as well on the line. So I just want to give you, Ms. Pomham, we, we heard from Kim earlier. And if you have any comments for our board this morning. From you still.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few quick comments. First, I would defer to Kim for response to the hearing officer on the characterization of the brief. I am a little confused because we, as petitioners, all agreed for our petition to be consolidated. And I, I would speak only on my behalf, but I can, I know I clearly speak for the other petitioners that Kim is here as our representative today, and we're 100% in support of her in that role. My understanding as consolidated appeal, that that would be apparent, but if we need to put something in writing, we certainly can do that. Second, and this is something I haven't had the luxury of discussing with the other members, but as you expressed, our concern about a delay in the hearing initially was that the asphalt plant would begin operation prior to the hearing, and all of our concerns that have been expressed then would be realized. I would say that Mr. Romero expressed in the last meeting that they were not able to begin operation because the county basically has stepped in and required them to go through a permitting process, which has not happened yet. So in light of that, if that indeed is still in place, my understanding in speaking with the county is that they are going to require them to go through a special use permit process for the plant, meaning that whether your, whatever your decision is here, they still have to do that before they operate. So I believe, and I'd look to Kim, that if that indeed is the case, that a delay might not be, would, would possibly be amenable to us. So I, I would ask him to answer that. And then third, just in opinion, I find it, you know, the public hearing process is a very important one, and we've been involved with the NMED in the past, and they've been awesome in terms of their awareness and concern that our interest be represented and heard in other matters. So I do appreciate that, but it does concern me as a, a non-attorney and a group of us that have a lot of concerns about the process that are not legal counsel, that the process is one in such that we require legal counsel in order to be heard. So that's just my own personal opinion, not to say that we haven't tried to get legal counsel. But as general members of the population, not everybody has deep pockets to hire legal counsel, and to me, the process should be one, is we as individuals should be able to participate. And I do know that that doesn't negate our need to understand the law and the rules, but having said that, I would defer to Kim for, and the other members that are here for any input. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Pomham. I appreciate your comments, and I know the board does as well, given we're trying to make sure we, we walk through this process appropriately and as inclusive as possible, making sure also compliantly as possible. I do see that Ms. Torres is, is here as well. Would, would you mind? Do you have any comments for the board as well?
Um, this is Lila Torres. I agree with Sherry and, you know, the statements that she made that I think, you know, we should be afforded in, and I, you know, do not have deep pockets. I cannot, you know, afford an attorney, but I think we should, you know, our concerns which, you know, are factual based um, which, you know, are factual based on the information that is on the N, NMED's website, I think should be taken into consideration. And I think that basically, um, they're not looking at the facts, because one of the things that I also found is, on the last application that was submitted, it's very inaccurate. The emissions, um, compliance numbers that were entered exceed the number allowed by law. So I think that not all the facts are being taken into consideration, and I think the facts need to be taken into consideration um, for a hearing and not just what is, you know, based on the law.
Thank you, Ms. Torres. Um, and, and so I think logistically, um, Ms. Solaria, I, I know we had, you, you laid out some suggestions as we move forward, uh, a few minutes ago. Um, I guess, it, and I'm, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, it seems like there's a, a consensus or openness to kind of delaying the hearing. Um, I think in, for different reasons from all parties. And, um, and also from our petitioners, given that we don't have um, all the petitioners here. That said is, is it possible, um, you know, do we still have time in this process, uh, the hearing process for all parties to file the appropriate paperwork to allow for a continuance? Or a delay?
Um, yes, but can I answer your questions with a few more comments?
Sure.
That I think might, I, I, I've had a moment to kind of gather my thoughts um, and address some of the issues that have been raised in hopes of, of, um, moving us along here, but one, in answer to your preliminary question, um, if the parties all agree in writing to waive their right to have the hearing on the date they previously agreed, we can do that. It gets a little complicated because they obviously wouldn't be able to do that right now, and we would maybe have to take that up at another meeting to schedule it, or we could, we could, I could see us tentatively picking a date now and then subject to them agreeing to that date. So logistically, that is possible um, to answer that question. Um, in terms of, of a delay for additional briefing, as suggested by Mr. Chicalian, I'm of the opinion that that is not, um, at this point is not, uh, sufficient basis for delay. Um, and there's a number of reasons for that. One, um, you know, he ordered the parties to submit briefing on an issue, and it sounds like it wasn't briefed to his satisfaction, but I don't know how reordering them to do that is going to, uh, remedy that. Um, and then to the issue of the per, the permutee not responding, um, I think that the permutees' counsel has adequately addressed that they espouse, that they adopt the department's position on the issues. So I don't think delaying the hearing on the basis of ordering them, ordering the permutee to submit additional briefing. I also don't think that that is a sufficient basis for delay. So that's my thoughts on the scheduling, um, my assessment. And like I said, the, the door is open. If all parties agree to reschedule it, it's just going to be a little bit, not that we can't do it, we just have to make sure we have all of our ducks in a row and, and all of that. Um, but, uh, that, that's my impression on, on the issue of delay. On the issue of narrowing potential issues for hearing, um, you know, as we've seen in other contexts, not necessarily, well, we did see it in, in an adjudicatory hearing. Um, the hearing officer is empowered to make evidentiary exclusions based on what's relevant. You know, what, what, what the board can hear, can and cannot consider to the issue of potential legal issues, and, and I, I will concede that, um, Council B. Hill did point out that the additional nuance that I think I probably glossed over in my initial comments is that this is a relocation, not an initial registration. So there are all these legal nuances that um, need to be considered, and I do think that, uh, the forum for that is to kind of, to have the parties, um, battle that out, for lack of a better term, at the hearing level. The hearing, they're, they're welcome to brief those issues. Um, the hearing officer can make evidentiary exclusions. Um, both parties are, are entitled to file motions in limine. Um, that all becomes part of the record, uh, for the, the board to consider. So, um, for example, if, if the board makes, I mean, if the hearing officer decides to exclude evidence A, B, C, because it's not relevant to the relocation issue, the parties can proffer the evidence they would have offered, and the board can take that up, take that up in their deliberations, and vice versa. If, if the, if the, if the hearing officer, um, decides to allow that evidence in, we could consider the arguments for and against, um, once that comes to, once the record of the hearing comes to the board's consideration. So I acknowledge that there are these legal issues. Um, I'm just, the board isn't really empowered to rule on them here. I think that that's appropriate for, to be briefed to the hearing officer and exclude evidentiary exclusions made on those bases, and then we also have those, we would also have those briefs, um, and record to consider in our final deliberations. And again, I will again reiterate my position that, uh, again, to the extent that there has been this, this notion that, um, we should, we should construe the motion, the answer as a motion to dismiss. Um, my view is that, again, viewing the lights, the, the facts as alleged by the petitioners and the light most favorable to them, that there are fa- factual issues that can be um, considered, um, during a factual hearing. So I think that's all, um, I wrote down to mention. Uh, I know that, no, that was a lot, and I, of course, I would stand for questions as well.
Thank you, Ms. Solaria. I see Member Garcia's hand up, then Member Honker. Oh, you're on mute.
Uh, I, try again. Can you hear me now? Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Solaria. Um, so I have two questions, and I think the first one, Ms. Solaria, can answer pretty quick, but one, one question is just a matter of clarifying a point. I'm a little confused by the fact that we consolidated this hearing, but yet we keep talking about, we have to hear from every single petitioner. So I'm a little confused as to why if we consolidate the hearing, I mean, the, uh, petition, isn't it now one petition? So do we still have to hear from every petitioner? I'm a little confused about that point.
That's a good question, Member Garcia, and I forgot to write that down as something I wanted to address because it was raised by one of the petitioners. So when we consolidate the hearing, that was merely for purposes as all of these petitions would, would appear on the same day, and we're going to ha- hear all this evidence on the same date. It's going to be considered by the hearing officer as one case. There was no representation at the time that the hearing, that the petitioners would be represented by one of the mem, one of the petitioners. There has to be, um, I think, you know, protecting all parties' rights. Um, there has to be a formalization that these parties are going to be represented by one person or, or two people. Um, and that's not to derive the petitioners in any way for not knowing that. Um, that's just, um, we're no, we're, we're explaining that now, that it was, the consolidation was for purposes of you all are going to come to this hearing together, and we're going to do this all as one hearing. Um, I would analogize it to the consolidated hearing. We had, um, Three Bear, which seems like years ago now. If you remember, there were different parties there. They were all represented by separate counsel, but we had consolidated that for purposes of a hearing. So, um, yeah, that, I, I want to clarify that. That's a great question, that there, I don't, I don't see an issue with the petitioners deciding to be represented by a particular person. It just, that really does have to be formalized in the interests of protecting everyone's part, rights, um, going forward.
Much. And my second question at this point is, um, it seems as though, and correct me if I'm wrong, it seems as though the ball is in the hearing officer's court at this point. Uh, Hearing Officer Chicalian has now heard from the parties regarding his question about how they feel about the department's, uh, motion to dismiss. So now the, it seems that the hearing officer could make a decision on that point. And it seems to me it's the hearing officer's decision since we, we transferred that to the hearing officer, or is anybody asking the board to make that decision, whether, whether we go forward with the hearing or not? It seems like the ball is in the hearing officer's court. Am I, am I wrong about that?
Member Garcia, I would actually construe it as whether or not the board wants the hearing to go forward is up to the board. Um, that, that rests with the board. Um, and I think that's why the hearing officer came to us today, because he would also construe whether or not, ultimately, that's a decision that rests with the board. Um, I, I, I would not say that the board is empowered at this moment based on what's been filed to grant a motion to dismiss the hearing altogether, for all the reasons I've stated, um, previously about that the department has conceded. There are certain factual issues that could be tried at a hearing. Um, and that my view is that, that there are, there are callable claims as to the other, whether or not the relocation was properly registered, which are legal issues that the parties will have more opportunity, um, I think, to address below. And I do think, you know, so that the board could have the fullest factual record to consider. Um, if that evidence was let in by the hearing officer, once those facts are in, the parties are, are, will have an opportunity to argue based on those facts. So, um, the department for its part can argue, the petitioners have said X, Y, and Z, and even given X, Y, and Z, this is why this fails on, as a matter of law. Um, and the same goes for the petitioners. So, um, I, I am somewhat adverse, and my position is that I am somewhat adverse at this point based on what's been filed to grant any sort of motion to dismiss. And my recommendation would be to proceed with a hearing, um, either as scheduled or, um, on another date if agreed to by all the petitioners and the department and the, and the other party, the permutee.
Thank you. That's very helpful. So, so then I'm much clearer on it now. The, the question before the board then is whether we move forward with the hearing on the 10th and 11th. Um, and would we need to dismiss the motion? Or not dismiss the motion anyway? Rule against the motion by the department, that would be on us, not the hearing officer.
Uh, yeah, well, there was, there isn't really a motion, um, they can. I think the, the, the response to the hearing officer's order was construed and portrayed as a motion to dismiss. I don't think, I think if the board decides today that the hearing will go forward, then that has kind of mooted any issue of, of a motion to dismiss. Um, I, a motion dismissed wasn't filed as such, so I don't think we need to rule, rule on it as such. Um, but as you stated, I think that's correct. The board needs to decide whether or not to, um, I guess, I guess would, would deny the hearing, hearing officer's request to continue this. Um, continue it based on the, the reasons offered by the hearing officer, but you could grant the, um, you could grant an extension of the hearing or a contingent on the hearing. Um, because the parties want to do that, um, but that is up to you. Um, and I, I don't see, um, as I stated before, I don't think that the need for additional briefing or the permutees' failure to respond to the hearing officer's initial order in, in and of themselves is adequate grounds to grant, uh, to change the date for those reasons. Um, so that, that's my position.
Thank you, Ms.
And, and I will say, it's also not clear to me, because we, I don't know if we've heard from the petitioners, or maybe I missed it, that they desire a continuation of this hearing. I think what I heard was that they wouldn't object to a continuation because of the issue with the city, the city is, is now, um, has now put a pause on the operations for its own reasons. So given that, I don't really see a need for continuation unless the parties have, have another reason that we haven't yet heard. Um.
Yeah, so, uh, thank you for that, Ms. Solaria, and I just want to make sure I'm hearing everything appropriately as well. Um, before the petitioners all, um, can, um, kind of make a motion to, to, to address us, uh, but what, I think what I'm, what I hear, and please, uh, as, as I go forward, you know, petitioners and parties, um, so what I'm hearing, uh, Ms. Solaria, is right now, before the board, um, we have, uh, you know, the report or the, um, discussion item from our hearing officer that, one, there were issues with the filing that he found, whichever, however we want to characterize it, or whoever wants to characterize it. But even because of those issues, there, there was almost difficulty for him to make a recommendation to the board on how to go forward. Um, whether even with the hearing, uh, issues with some of the filings he found, um, is what I heard from our hearing officer, but also with no concrete or specific reason to delay or postpone the hearing presented by, um, any petitioner or, uh, party. Um, that's kind of where we're needing that piece, I guess, that, that nugget. Um, and that's where I was asking the question, what could be done between now? Is there still time for one of the parties or all of the parties to agree for? Uh, and what would be that process to do that, if that's what ends up happening? Because that's, I'm, I'm hearing that the petitioners are not necessarily objecting, but we don't have all the petitioners here, so we can't make a decision that ways either. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, a, a couple of things, um, Chair Sweeney. One, so the, the request to delay this hearing is coming from the hearing officer, it's not coming from the parties. So, um, and my take is, is I'm not clear, or I, I don't, I don't view additional time, like, I don't think that there needs to be additional time for briefing, and that that should be a reason to delay the hearing. I just, I, I would not grant the hearing officer's request based on what was discussed, um, so far. Um, so that being said, if the here, if the board still would like to, um, continue the hearing, push the hearing out, because they agree, I mean, you all may agree with the, what the hearing officer needs, and, I mean, that's, that decision is not up to me. Um, then we could do that, but we would have, we would have to make that contingent on the, all of the petitioners agreeing. We could select it, for example, we could select a date today, um, subject to written consent by all of the filing petitioners. I would not, um, I have to recommend that we do that, because otherwise, uh, there's potential, you know, prejudice against their rights, as discussed by Mr. V. Hill, that could, um, come back in the end. So, uh, that, that would be my recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Solaria, and I see Hearing Officer Chicalian on there with his hand up. Um, and I know, Member Honker, uh, before we go to Mr. Chicalian, did you have a, a comment that, a question? Member Honker?
Uh, not a question. Uh, uh, I, I, the way I'm seeing this, I, I greatly appreciate Hearing Officer Chicalian's efforts to narrow the issues here. I do think, especially with the public notice, uh, the variety of, of issues there, some of these may could be filtered out because of what the, what the department's real requirements are. Um, my greater concern is something I think Ms. Popham raised, and that is, I don't think we should be following a path that requires the petitioners to get an attorney to play in this game. Uh, I, I think, um, require, you know, a, a, having a process that requires somebody to get an attorney, uh, excludes certain people. Uh, and I, I think part of our role is to, to hear all concerns. I think when we, um, when we scheduled this hearing initially, we realized there was a variety of issues from a, a number of petitioners. Um, and, uh, we, we set a hearing, and, uh, I appreciate the hearing officer's attempts to narrow that set of issues, but, um, uh, I, I, I don't think we should proceed. I, I, I don't think we should proceed in a manner that the petitioners have to go out and, and, and hire an attorney to be able to effectively state their case. So, uh, at this point, I'm not hearing a reason to, uh, to delay the hearing. I mean, if all the parties get together and, and reach a mutual agreement, great, but, um, uh, I, I realize it's going to take more management of the hearing since there's such a variety of issues. Uh, but, uh, that's what we, that's what we decided when we scheduled it. And, uh, so I'm, 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 I haven't heard a reason to change that path at this point.
Thank you, Member Honker. And we'll go to Hearing Officer Chicalian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, in twenty point one point two, uh, one oh nine, the rules regarding the hearing officer start out with the functions of a hearing officer. It's the most basic functions. And they say, "The hearing officer shall exercise all powers and duties prescribed or delegated under the act or this part. The hearing officer shall conduct a fair and impartial proceeding. Assure that the facts are fully elicited and avoid delay. The hearing officer shall have the authority to take all measures necessary for the maintenance of order and for the efficient, fair, and impartial adjudication of the issues arising in proceedings governed by this part." So the only way for me to do my job is to understand what are the issues that are relevant to this petition. To that extent, I read carefully every document that was filed in that, in this case. To suggest otherwise is not to know me or my style. In reading the documents carefully, it raised a very important question in my mind. What are the relevant issues that are going to go before this board at a hearing? In my order of briefing, which is an order of briefing to all parties, I lay it out. I, I take the time to cite to each rule that Mr. V Hill took the time and care to cite to me and the board in his second amended answer. These are his words, not mine. The rules and regulations that, that are in, in control here. And then I say to the parties, all of them, looking at this law, which controls this hearing, tell me why we should have this hearing legally, why? And if we have this hearing, what are the specific factual issues that comport with this rule, these rules at the hearing? That is a good faith attempt to do my job. If I didn't care about my job, I wouldn't have done it. I would have just issued a scheduling order and be done with it. But I do care about my job very much, and I care about my reputation. And because I care about my work product, I asked the parties through an order to help me understand what's going on here. Now, Mr. V Hill objects to the word regurgitation, which means to repeat. In, in, in many people's minds, it means to repeat. And in his answer, he says, in his brief, "None of the subsequent technical allegations raised by the petitioners can succeed as a matter of law." Well, that is a, that is a very serious statement by a lawyer. Then he tells me to read his, then he cites to his brief or his answer, filed May twenty eighth, long before I was appointed. Then he says, "However, the following allegations regarding public notice and participation do have factual issues that could be resolved by the hearing officer at a hearing." However, he never, in the rest of this brief, connects that sentence to his initial answer, which said, "It's irrelevant. These issues of public notice and participation are irrelevant to the rule that restricts review to a very specific legal issue." Then, and, and this is all public information. It's on our docketed matters webpage. I, I think I asked Pam to include it in the, uh, packet to the, uh, to the board members. He then goes on to basically repeat the same sentence over and over again in answer to each of the, in each of the petitioners' petitions. Either he says, "The department denies that the public posting requirement was deficient." However, he doesn't tell me why does it matter whether public posting being deficient has anything to do with the hearing under the law that we are required to participate? Or he says the following. "The department denies that the public participation for the application were deficient. Furthermore, the objection is not well taken. For registration under a general permit, the grounds for appeal are explicitly limited to whether the source was appropriately registered under a general permit." Well, how does being appropriately registered under a general permit have anything to do with the public notice? That is, he never expands upon that. That's all he says. And he says it over and over again. You will find it in the first paragraph on page five of his, of his brief. You will find it on the bottom of page five. "It's not helpful to just be told that and not to connect the dots as a hearing officer who's trying in good faith to do his job. The petitioners never tell me how their factual allegations of deficient public notice are related to the law that I specifically cite in my, in my order of briefing. And, 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 and the, and the permit holder doesn't respond at all. So I'm still left not knowing what the legal issues are, what the issues, the factual issues that are legally relevant are at this hearing. I don't know how to do my job if I don't know what are the relevant issues because the parties aren't helping me at all. I've read every one of them carefully, contrary to allegations by various people who have spoken today to tell me that I haven't spent the time to really read these things. I've read every, I've read every document that's been filed in this case. So it's my opinion that the, that the petitioners should be given an opportunity to waive their sixty day right to a hearing because as it is now, the board and I don't know what are the legally relevant issues at this hearing. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, uh, Hearing Officer Chicalian, um, for your thoughts and, and taking us back through that. Um, I think I would like to hear back from our board, uh, legal counsel. I know, um, just help us clarify. I know we've talked around some things and I just want to make sure again, we're trying to move forward, um, and, and how we do that. Um, would you mind, um, sharing some of your thoughts too, after Mr. Chicalian shared his?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, for, for my part, my part, I don't, um, I don't view the legal issues to be heard as opaque as I think that the hearing officer does. I do, I, I've, I've reviewed what's been filed. I, I think the legal issues to be tried factually are clear enough. One being the public notice issue. Um, Mr. Chicalian has brought up the notion that that's not related to whether or not, um, the registration was correct. But I think what's fairly implied by the department's position, um, and I will note again that the department has conceded this so that the, the defending party in this action is conceding that this is a tribal issue. Um, that the notion of due process is a, is a freestanding, so to speak, challenge here. Um, I don't want that, I don't want that statement to, to open up any sort of Pandora's box, but I do think, um, the concern about their due process as a general matter is, is freestanding claim, at least in the context of this, uh, petition and as again conceded to by the department. So that's one legal issue or one legal issue upon which evidence can be taken. The second is the more complicated issue about whether the relocation was proper and, um, the department is well within its rights to take the position that any challenge against the general permit is with, is outside the bounds of a hearing challenge. The, the board is not empowered to hear that. But again, I don't view the petition that way. I view the petition as alleging facts that, um, again, taking what they're saying on its face for the purposes of the board's consideration at this point. Um, they have alleged that the permit, that the registration, um, would not comply with the terms of the general permit, which is, I think, a factual issue that could be, that evident, upon which evidence could be taken. The issue of the relocation, I think, we're just, we don't have the, the legal analysis to make that decision right now. Like I wouldn't, I'm not making a decision on that, whether or not the board, um, that, that the, the department had no other choice but to grant the relocation because this, this permittee met all the requirements. That is also something that could be, um, those facts could be elicited. And if, if in fact, the, um, evidence shows the permit, the permittee checkbox X, Y, and Z, and that's the regulation said they had to check X, Y, and Z, then that's what the board will consider at that point, um, when it considers the record of the hearing. So, um, kind of to sum that all up, I just don't, again, I just don't see that there is enough, um, that there, that is, it is so unclear at this moment that we should delay the hearing. Um, and the board, I will say, the board is within its discretion to ask the petitioners to waive their right to a hearing, but they aren't the ones asking. The hearing officer is. Um, and, uh, the board can grant, uh, can make the request of the petitioners based on the hearing officer's request, but it, it's not bound to do so.
Thank you, Ms. Solaria. A member Garcia. I, I appreciate, uh, Solaria's comments, uh, clarifying the whole issue. Uh, I also appreciate that, uh, Hearing Officer Chicalian wants to have a complete picture of the lay of the land before hearing. However, I think we have a, a clearer picture now than we did before this day started. Uh, so I, I guess at this point I am leaning towards, um, going ahead with the hearing on the tenth and eleventh. We don't need to ask the parties again because they've already agreed. Um, so, um, I, I, that's, I'm leaning, uh, towards just going ahead and having the hearing. I also appreciate, uh, member Honker's comments. I don't think petitioners should have to have a lawyer to have their issues heard before our board. I, I completely agree with that a hundred percent. And I, I understand some of the arcane legal questions, uh, that the hearing officer presented. I completely understand why they, they didn't address those as a legal matter. They addressed their, their factual case, which is what they're interested in. And that's, and quite frankly, that's what I'm interested in as well. So, um, so I'm, uh, I'm interested in moving forward with the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Garcia. Uh, Vice Chair Trujillo-Davis?
Yes, thank you. I actually have a question, question for Mr. Chicalian. I'm just curious if the discussions here today have, uh, clarified the issues for you and have made, um, made the, the hearing, uh, upcoming hearing a little more possible in your mind?
I appreciate the question. Thank you. Um, what I've heard from Counsel Solaria is that she views the public notice as relevant. No one has connected the public notice with the legal issue before the board. And, and if, if someone would do that, I would feel a lot more comfortable going forward. And that's what I asked the parties to do. And no one has, but no one has done that at this point. There was a statement by Mr. V Hill that public notice is a factual issue that may be relevant at the hearing. Ms. Solaria has told me that she views that public notice uh, uh, is relevant. However, when I look at the rule twenty point two point seventy-two, point two twenty C five, it specifically limits administrative review to whether or not a source qualifies to register for coverage under a general construction permit. Now, I don't understand how public notice fits into that, that very simple statement. And, and Ms. Solaria, if I'm missing something, this is why I asked the parties to brief this issue. Because I don't read that. As Mr. V Hill put in his second amended answer, that was the issue before the EIB. I didn't disagree with that at the time. I still don't disagree with that at the time. It seems very straightforward that the review is very strictly limited to that whether or not question. So I don't understand how the public notice aspect is connected to that legally. So i- if, if someone could answer that, Ms. Trujillo-Davis, I would feel a lot more comfortable going forward with this hearing because then I would know what's relevant. And I could sustain objections or, or deny objections and, and perform my role in a, in, in, in a reasonable manner. But at this point, I, I'm still left not connecting the two issues.
This is Chris V Hill, uh, Madam Chair, uh, members. If I could be allowed to address this issue, I, I think I can.
Thank you. Yeah, I think there was another member. Was that member Bitsur? You had your hand up?
I was just giving a thumbs up to hearing further from Counsel V Hill.
Thank you. Um, I, I do want to, um, just if the, if the petition, petitioners can, uh, indulge me for a little bit. Um, Kim and Ms. Torres and I forget was Ms. Pomcam. Um, I know we've been talking around, but maybe I just ask you a direct question on this. What are your thoughts about everything you've been hearing? I, I know there's only a handful, but we can't make a full decision anyway right now, but I do want to hear your thoughts on kind of, um, you know, the hearing moving forward, the timeline. Um, I'm just going to ask you directly just because we've been kind of dancing around what your thoughts are.
You, Chairwoman, I could speak on my own behalf. Um, I served as a mediator in environmental claims for about thirty years, so I understand the hearing officer's, um, frustration with understanding the disconnects between what he's reading in the regulation and the, um, the complicated fact pattern that we have here and trying to understand it so that he's prepared, um, to say anything. And I would just say, um, the petitioners, you know, would like to provide whatever information is helpful to adjudicate and move forward on finding the right answer to our, our issues here with this particular location of this plant. And I can't speak for everyone, but the, the issue comes down to, um, in our view, that the permit, the public notice and due process was not followed. So we're left with the, what, what are our options to bring this to light? And so that's really what we're trying to do here without following, I guess, the, um, with the, the normal procedures that are, are present within, uh, this environmental, uh, board. So there are facts and temporal issues that are complicated that, uh, in my personal opinion, are important for the hearing officer to hear. And I think that, uh, Council for the Board has articulated that there's an overarching concern regarding due process that would give us standing to be heard. And we agree with her. So I don't think that, you know, if, if there was a, if there was a benefit to delay, that we, the petitioners would support that. Given the, what is transpiring on the ground in terms of actually operating the plant and the, and the limitations to doing that, given no compliance with the existing county permitting process. So from our perspective, if we were to survey the, the participants, I believe, are, are the petitioners, that they would agree to a delay, if it would just serve to getting the information better understood and giving the board and the hearing officer what they need to make a determination. And so we're willing to work with everyone on providing what it is that you're looking for. I have to say, my own reading of, you know, what was asked for perhaps was not as specific or nuanced as what the hearing officer was requesting. So I apologize for that. But I think that it's for, for those reasons, right? We have very educated individuals reading the same information and having difficulty understanding what is actually being said and communicated. So it would benefit all here to be able to have a public hearing, to be able to talk about what are the actual issues, whether they be outlined within the state's regulations and the way that they're being interpreted by the hearing officer or those as being interpreted by the department itself, as well as the Council for the Board. So our objective, our main objective is to have the information available that is being sought. So you are empowered to make a decision that is consistent with equity and fairness. And so I would just ask the question, if there's something we can be doing to allow for that to happen. We're happy to do so.
Thank you, Kim. Appreciate that. And I, I think that helps me. I don't know if any, oh, Ms. Pompan, yes.
Thank you, and thank you, Kimla. I think she's spoken quite well on our behalf. Two comments. One would be, I really feel and don't understand why our response does not show due cause or would not be factual consideration, since it was clearly stated, our belief and evidence that the applicant cannot comply with the requirements of the application. So that's just a statement at this point. I do believe as one of the petitioners that if the board were to set a new meeting predicated on our response that we don't have an issue with waiving the 60 days, that within probably a matter of 24 to 48 hours, we could provide a consolidated response that would indicate to you that we are working together and that we would waive that right. So I would, if Kimla or anyone else here has any objection to that concept, I do agree with Kimla, though, as though we would like to move forward as rapidly as possible. We also are very sensitive to the hearing officer having a comfort level of, that he has all the information that he needs for the hearing to go forward. And again, our willingness, I think, to do that is predicated on the fact that the asphalt plant, at this point, can't begin operation anyway. And that was our concern initially and not wanting to waive. So I believe if you did go that direction, that we could provide the information you need in terms of our consolidated effort and our ability, our willingness to waive the 60 K requirement.
Thank you, Ms. Pompan. Appreciate that. And I just, again, wanna look to if Ms. Torres is still online, I don't know if she is. Make sure that she has a time. I don't see her anymore. But thank you, Kim and Ms. Pompan for your, your input. And I think that helps me and the board as well. For fellow board members, do you have any other questions or comments for, yes, Member Bitsy?
I was hoping to hear from Department Counsel again. I think he wanted to weigh in.
Okay. Yes, Mr. V Hill?
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members. So the, the, the connection between the public notice and this proceeding, there, there is no explicit, what you might call black letter or regulatory connection between public notice and what I'm calling the substantive issues, the regulatory issues with regard to how things are done, you know, adherence to air quality standards. But Council Solaria rightly characterized this as a standalone issue. The provision that limits the board's ability to, to, to only hear issues with regard to the appropriateness of the registration does not nullify due process rights. And that's kind of a basic sort of law school first year thing that the, the constitutional rights of the petitioners, the due process rights under both the federal constitution and the New Mexico constitution need to be protected. And there, the due pro, or the, the notice issue that, that has come up in this issue is not in the regs itself, but it is a due process consideration that the department offers to the public so the public can participate. So if the, if the, and, and it is in our guidance, it's not in the regulations, but it's in the air quality guidance. So to the extent that the department didn't require the applicant to sufficiently adhere to those due process requirements, that's really what the issue is. It's not that it's connected to any substantive issue. It is a standalone issue that goes to their constitutional rights, which cannot be taken away by any regulation. And, and it, and it would have to be, i- if, 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 if it was limited, it would have to be limited probably explicitly by the legislature. So that was not done. So the issue, again, you know, without sort of drilling it into the ground, the issue of the hearing or whether or not public notice was appropriate is a standalone due process issue that is properly before the EIB. And, and could be determinative of this action. You know, it could be that, that the rights were violated. I'm, I'm not saying they were, they weren't. I'm just, you know, it, it is, it is conceivable in the mind of, of the Bureau and the department that if public notice was not done properly, then the, the EIB does have the power to make a decision based on that. So that's really kind of where we're coming from. I'm not sure what more I could say. I don't want to keep speaking in circles. But I, that is the issue. There is no, there is no black letter connection. There's no regulatory connection between the, the issues about the, you know, whether or not the permit can be reopened in public notice. It is a standalone issue that the department concedes, does merit a factual hearing. And then the department's position is, there is no problem. I want to reiterate that. So it's, 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 it's a closed question. And, and it, it, the, the department, I just want to clarify one thing. In, in these pleadings, again, the department has a kind of a, a multiple roles here. Part of my role as an attorney is, is as an advocate, defending the propriety of the Bureau's action and taking a, an adversarial position. We did everything right. There's nothing to see here. Let's move on. That's the, the position of the department, basically. The other side of it is just the basic fairness of the process that, okay, while our position is that everything was done correctly and there is no way that the, the EIB could reasonably overturn this decision, we do concede there are some factual issues that could be heard by the department. So I feel like I'm getting into talking into circles a little bit, so I'll stop here. But I just, I wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Mr. V Hill. And I just wanted to note really quick the time. It's 11:48. We've been going almost three hours and I just wanted to look to our board members. I know I need a quick bio break. I don't know if you all want to take a quick, maybe five minute break? If that's possible, I know we've heard a lot, maybe quick break. We can come back and finish up the discussion. How does that sound? Good, good. Okay, um, it's five minutes, okay? All right, let's come back at 11:55. Parties to get back on. Another minute. Ms. Solaria, I'm just waiting for Vice Chair Trujillo Davis. Ms. Jones, are you here as well? Sure that we have our recording. Looks like we are. Okay. All right.
And, and I did restart the recording.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Appreciate it. All right, we're back. Hope everybody had a quick minute to stretch the legs a little bit. And now that we're back, fellow board members, do you have any other questions or concerns? Is it clear as mud as we go forward? And I appreciate, again, all of the parties and petitioners and legal councils going through this process. Appreciate that. With that, I do see Hearing Officer Chacalian, your hand is up. Forward is yours.
Thank you. You know, the Vice Chair asked me a question before. Did the conversation clear up the confusion? And the answer is still no. And the answer is no for a very simple reason. Mr. V Hill's second amended answer goes through great lengths at telling me why public notice is not relevant to this hearing. On page two, he specifically says, "This matter concerns a relocation of a portable source under a general permit." And he cites a rule. "And is therefore exempt from the requirement of a permit revision." Okay, "The relocation was registered under a general permit pursuant to a rule. Therefore, there was no public notice or participation requirement for this action." And he cites to a rule. And I've heard today that petitioners have a right to due process, to public comment and notice. But the rule specifically says, "No public notice or participation is required for the Air Quality Bureau to approve the relocation." So as you can still see, Madam Chair and Vice Chair, who asked the question, no one has connected for me this idea that there was some requirement of public notice that was not met or what, or was deficient, when the rule specifically excludes public notice or participation to relocate this general permit. So the answer is no. I still don't understand. And I feel like I need to understand that for me to do my job properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer. And appreciate that as well. That said, we're, you know, maybe I'll look to Ms. Solaria and, and see what your thoughts are, how to proceed forward.
Well, I will just, I guess this is a question back to Mr. Chacalian. I, I don't understand why this isn't a colloquy you could have with the parties at the top of the hearing versus having the board entertain these arguments here. I think that the, I think we, we've indulged the inquiries in so much as giving Mr. V Hill and the parties a chance to address it. But I think anything further than what we've accomplished here might be, you know, diminishing returns.
Okay, thanks for the question, Ms. Solaria. I tried to address this, right? I mean, I ordered the parties to brief the issue. Show me the connection between the factual issues of public notice and participation with the approval process that the department goes through for a relocation for a portable asphalt plant. No one did that. Mr. V Hill made a statement that was not connected to anything. It actually contradicted his initial answer. So his briefing contradicted his initial answer. I tried to do this before this meeting. I brought this to the board's attention because I'm not having any luck doing my job at this point. So I, I feel like at this point, having this discussion at the beginning of a hearing would also be a waste of the board's time. And that's the whole purpose of me having to streamline, my authority to streamline the, the issues for the board and to maintain order and a fair and impartial hearing and all the things that the rule says that I have the authority to do, I'm not able to do because I don't feel like the parties have cooperated with a simple order to brief, which is all I issued to try to understand this connection. And I still don't have that connection. I hope that answers your question.
Thank, thank you, Hearing Officer Chacalian. Before I get to Member Kate, so I want to look to Ms. Solaria. Do you have any follow up on that?
Yeah, I would just make an additional comment or suggestion that, you know, as hearing officer, as you stated before, you can, you could, you could issue an additional order and have, if, if you want more specific briefing, there's nothing prohibiting you from doing that. I just, I'm trying to be mindful of the board's role here and, and of course of, of their time. And I don't really see what else should be addressed by the board at this point. If, if the parties didn't brief the issue to your satisfaction, you could issue a different order. I, I mean, I don't think it's really the, having appointed you as hearing officer, I don't see it's the board's role here to additionally order anything else from the parties on that issue. And there's nothing stopping you from doing that. You could have it due. I think we still have two weeks and change until the hearing. So it's, it's tight on the parties, but you could do it and have them brief that, that issue to your, or attempt to have them brief that issue to, to more of your satisfaction. And then if not, again, have a colloquy at the top and will, that will all be in the, the transcript. The board, alluding to the board's time, I know the board, this board is very, is always very good about attending these hearings to the extent they're capable, but there, it may be that a quorum wouldn't be able to attend both days. And since we'll have that report from you, that's totally fine. I just wanted to mention that for the board. Although I, I do know you guys are great about trying to attend as much as possible for these hearings.
Thank you, Ms. Solaria. Appreciate that. And I want to get to Member Kate. I know you had your hand up.
So, you know, here's my take. Hearing Officer doesn't seem to be of a mind to looking for a resolution that's satisfactory to him. And so, so I just wonder, I put this to counsel and the other board members, I guess. So what is the possibility of appointing a new hearing officer in, in the hopes of moving this whole matter forward?
Thank you for that. Member Kate, and I don't know, yes, Member Bitsy?
I was thinking the same thing. If the hearing officer had an impasse in his mind and the information he needs isn't going to be readily available, that maybe we change horses in midstream. So find someone who can, who will go forth with what's been given. I don't know, that maybe that's a, a question for counsel.
Yes, Ms. Solaria, what, what are your thoughts?
That's, that is an option. There, there's nothing prohibiting, prohibiting it. I do think that puts us in a little bit of a jam logistically because we either have to find someone outside the department or one of you all could serve as hearing officer. It's a little bit complicated in that regard. I will also say that when we schedule this hearing. I will also say that when we scheduled this hearing, I believe I had noted that I have another board meeting that second day, which would have been fine for me to not be there because we have a Hearing Officer. If one of you all wants to serve as Hearing Officer, I would only feel comfortable with that if I was there to help advise you. And I wouldn't, because of that conflict, there's a chance I wouldn't because I'm not sure a colleague of mine would be able to cover that other meeting. So I'll mention that. And I don't, you know, I don't think that we're necessarily, I won't speak for Mr. Chakalian. I don't think, I don't think we're at the point where he's, that he is, you know, incapable or by any means of handling this hearing. I, I'll say that, but I will, to address your specific question, yes, that is an option. It does present just logistical challenges and that in itself might require a continuation of the hearing date.
Thank you, Ms.
Yeah.
Thank you, sorry, and thank you for that. A member, Garcia.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm wondering, and I'm not speaking for the rest of the board at this point, but I'm wondering if we could, if we could ask the Hearing Officer to go ahead and address these issues with the information he has as best he can. And as Ms. Solaria suggested, handle it at the top of the hearing, the legal question, get that out of the way and then move forward. If, if answering the legal question results in not having a hearing, then we don't have a hearing. If, if the answer is we move forward with the hearing, then we move forward with the hearing. It seems to me that could be handled on the date of the hearing. And I'm wondering if we could ask the Hearing Officer to do it that way. And again, I'm not saying I'm speaking for the rest of the board, just speaking for myself. I just, I'm just wondering if we could ask the Hearing Officer to do that.
Thank you, Member Garcia. And I do want to acknowledge Mr. V. Hill did have his hand up. And I'll get to you unless you, your response addresses some of Member Garcia's question.
Madam Chair, members of the board, were you, was it my turn to speak? I wasn't clear about what you were saying.
Thank, thank you, Mr. V. Hill. So with that, Hearing Officer Chakalian, do you have any response to Member Garcia?
The way I understood the question from Member Garcia, she was asking other board members whether they felt, or maybe Ms. Solaria, whether they felt as though they could ask me to do it in that way. If you're asking me if I can do it in that way, if I were, if I were to be held to the August ten hearing date, I would issue an order today, later today. I wouldn't change the wording of my order. I feel it's very clear on what I was asking. I'm asking the same thing. If you read my order and it's all of two pages, it specifically says, "Here's the legal framework we're dealing with. Show me how your factual allegations fit into this legal framework." I want, I would, I would issue that today and I would, I would cut down the deadline to maybe next Monday because on Tuesday, the technical testimony is due. Now, we don't have a scheduling order to address the order of testimony. We don't have a scheduling order in place to deal with how the parties are going to deal with either rebuttal or direct testimony, all the fine details that I normally have dealt with by this time when I understand the issues at a hearing. And, and I'll mention that of all the hearings I've done, and I've done about three dozen hearings so far, many before the WQCC, I've never had a hearing where I don't understand how the petition fits into the legal framework. It's never happened before. And so all the good faith effort I have put into trying to understand, I feel like I'm still back at square one. And I, I'm not sure I feel like I have the board's backing and grant of authority that the rule gives me. So I, I wonder whether at this point I should recuse myself. I've never done it before, but I feel like my authority is so undermined here when I bring to the board's attention that I issued an order to try to do the job properly and one party ignored me, another party didn't answer my question at all, and a third party just told me the same thing they told me in the first thing, but then contradicted themselves, that would be Mr. V. Hill. And I'm left with, well, how am I supposed to serve the board properly? I, I feel like at this point, I feel like I don't have the backing of the board to do my job properly as Member Kate's and, 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 and one other, Member Bitzer, have, have mentioned at this point. Again, my reputation is everything to me. You know, I introduced myself to this board about a year ago. And, and, and I take my reputation very seriously and I want to do a good job whenever I'm appointed. At this point, knowing that this hearing is coming up on August ten and it is July twenty-second, and I'm still left with not understanding what the relevant issues are, the most basic thing possible, what are the relevant issues? And I've asked that question directly in an order and it was ignored. I, I don't feel like I can be prepared for an August ten hearing, not unless the parties start to cooperate with me and I have the backing of the board. And I'm not sure I have that. That's, that's my best answer I can give you.
This is Chris V. Hill from the department. I, I think it's important that the board understands that if the Hearing Officer issues the same order, we will issue the same response. Our response was legally adequate. We explained everything that needed to be explained. We are advocates for, I am an advocate for the department. I do not work for the Hearing Officer. I have a specific job to do. And so it's my position that the job was done professionally and adequately. I understand there's a difference of opinion about that, but in my view, that's for the Hearing Officer to resolve on his end. So if he issues the same order, we will issue the exact same response.
Thank you, Mr. V. Hill, and thank you.
Since, since I asked the question, let me, let me address Mr. Chakalian's response, please.
Of course, Member Garcia.
I appreciate your answer, although I'm not, not quite sure you answered. I think you, so you're saying that you would not, you would not feel comfortable moving forward because you haven't gotten the information you need? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, great. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you. So I guess at this point then, I, I do also agree with Mr. V. Hill. If you, if you issue the order again, you're probably going to get the same responses. I'm quite sure you will. So I guess I'm starting to wonder whether, whether we shouldn't get another Hearing Officer. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Garcia. And Member Hunker, you had your hand up?
Well, let me come at this from a different angle. I guess as a board member, this whole public participation, public notice thing doesn't seem that complicated. It seems like where we would start would be, what are the requirements under a general permit? What do the general permit rules say? What does the general permit say? Are there any things in the, anything specific in the authorization of this particular operation that required some, some degree of public, public involvement? I mean, it seems like that's where we would start in the hearing. That should be fairly straightforward. We can view any, anything from the petitioners in light of, of those requirements and, and, and try to move through it. Now, there are some other issues other than public involvement that they've raised. And so it seems like we've, we've really gotten hung up on this public involvement thing. And there are some other issues that, that are worthy of discussing, but I, it just seems like this is, we're all wrapped around the axle here and it just seems like it shouldn't be that difficult an issue, at least what I would be looking for as a board member in terms of what are the requirements, what happened, what are the allegations? And, and, and work through it.
Thank you, Member Hunker. Appreciate that summary. And I, I think to follow up also on Member Garcia's question and the response from Hearing Officer. And, and please correct me, fellow board members, if I'm wrong here. It feels like we're kind of at an impasse a little bit here. But I do want to point to Member Bitzer's recommendation or suggestion about, you know, maybe possibly changing the Hearing Officer so we can get some movement forward on this issue, given that if we go back through the same loop, we're going to end up in the same place. If, if we proceed right now with the same order, nothing's going to change. Legal Counsel V. Hill reiterated, he would just say the same thing. So we're going to end up back here. And I think that will help us, board members, move forward on this issue. And so I am just following, throwing this out to, to fellow board members and maybe Ms. Solaria, what does that process look like? If we were to look for, or, you know, identify a different Hearing Officer? One, the process at doing, and then how does that affect timeline? And all the notices and requirements for this entire process?
Right. And Madam Chair, let me just look at how the agenda was drafted for today.
This is Counsel V. Hill. The department would circulate a joint motion among the parties for an extension so that Counsel Solaria could be there, we could work with Counsel Solaria in order to make sure that she's there to assist the board. So the department would be willing to draft a motion for extension and obtain the, if possible, and I think it would be to obtain the consent of all the parties so we wouldn't be on such a rushed timeline and so that Counsel Solaria could assist a board member. I just wanted to offer that. Madam Chair, board members, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted to maybe open up some more, some different avenues so we could sort of move forward on this issue.
Thank you, Legal Counsel V. Hill. Yes, Ms. Solaria.
Thank you, Mr. V. Hill, for that offer. And it aligns with what I would have suggested. I was, I was checking the wording of our agenda item from this morning to see if we could appoint a new Hearing Officer under what was stated. I, I don't believe it's broad enough for us to do that. So what I would recommend is, one, that we would delay the date of the hearing. We would take up the appointment of a Hearing Officer, which could be either a third party or I would, as I mentioned earlier, I, I do think that this is something possibly that a member could handle, subject to me being available to assist them during the hearing itself for the whole time, for the whole conduct of the hearing. So those are two issues. And I'll mention it logistically, when we were to conclude this item, I was going to poll the members for the possibility of a special meeting date next Friday anyway because there is a time-sensitive petition that I anticipate to be filed today, which the board has to also set for hearing within that sixty, sixty-day window. And if we wait until the August meeting, it would be too late. So I could put, also, also put this item, the appointment of a Hearing Officer and the scheduling of a date onto that. If we can make that special meeting happen, we could consider it then. And then we would again have to have the consent of the party. So what, what we would do here today is we just kind of leave it as it is. And on Friday, hopefully that would give the parties enough time to agree on an extension, maybe come up with some dates and then whatever day we figure out for this special meeting, we would set it, do a formal appointment, set the scheduling and all of that.
Thank you, Ms. Solaria, for outlining that. Fellow board members, do you have any questions about that process or comments? Member Bitzer, thumbs up. Thumbs up, Member Hunker. Member Garcia. Vice Chair. Okay. So it's looking like we're all in alignment with that. Is there something we need to do or, like you said, just as is right now and then have these?
Right. Right now, right now, we're not going to take an action that date is held as it is. Mr., when we close the meeting, technically, Mr. Chakalian is solely appointed Hearing Officer and we will take up doing that shuffling at a notice meeting, which I'm hoping, depending on your answers to my informal poll, could be sometimes, sometime next week. And if not, we'll look at the week after that.
Okay. Looks like we got thumbs up from our board members on that informal poll. And so I think that seems like we're finally getting to a way to move forward. No decision now on Agenda Item Six, but well, more to come in the next week.
Right. Yeah.
Okay, with that, I just want to thank again Hearing Officer Chakalian, Legal Counsel V. Hill, our petitioners and all those that chimed in on this particular agenda item. Appreciate your time. I know we, we beat this one pretty tough. And so, but thank you so much for your time and energy on this.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Great. So with that, next meeting, next agenda item is next meeting, August twenty-sixth. Are we good on that for right now, knowing that we're going to have another probably meeting before that?
Well, I, Members, so we have our regular standing monthly meeting on August twenty-sixth, which I think we should leave undisturbed. But I was hoping if it works for the members, if you have a quorum, we would just need four to hop on real quick, either next, well, let's say next Friday. So a special meeting only requires seventy-two hours' notice and the agenda items, I think, are fairly within special meeting. One would be, as I mentioned previously, there is a petition that I expect to be filed today. It's also an adjudicatory appeal that would have to be, and that hearing would have to be set sixty days from today. So if we wait until our August meeting, it will be kind of logistically too late to schedule the hearing and appoint a Hearing Officer for that. And I've asked Pam to look out for that petition today. And then we could also Agenda Item, that matter that we were just discussing, to set that, to pick a date and to appoint a Hearing Officer. So with that, I just need to know if four people can get on a meeting, at least four meeting, can get on a meeting sometime next Friday. And if Pam, you could make that work. And I'll, I'll chat with you about noticing that and the agenda. That's fine.
Could, could we get an idea about how long it might take? I have an appointment next Friday and I'm just wondering.
I would, I want to optimistically say that it wouldn't take longer than an hour. I'm, again, optimistically estimating thirty minutes for the petition that I expect in that appeal to go through the same exercise of appointing a Hearing Officer and picking a date. And then thirty, thirty minutes at most for handling the re, a shuffling of Hearing Officers for, for the hearing that I just, we just covered. And in the meantime, I will email the parties, Mr. V. Hill and the petitioners, to kind of get a window of dates so that, you know, and, and some sort of consent. I just want to get that documented so that when we come in, when we get together on Friday morning, we don't have to do all that, that, that we kind of just, it's, it would be perfunctory at that point.
So Friday morning, mine is kind of tight. Is there, I'm looking at the board members. It would, Member Garcia, you said you have, you have an appointment. Would Friday afternoon work?
My appointment's at one, but.
Like Friday at three?
Yeah, three would work for me.
Would that work for us? Would that work for other members? Okay. Friday, the 29th at three? Would that work for you, Ms. Solaria?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. Put it on my schedule right away. Wonderful.
And I believe Ms. Popham had her hand raised. I didn't want to miss a scheduling issue there.
Sorry, I missed you.
Thank you. Quickly, I just wanted to thank the board on behalf of the petitioners for your consideration of our desire to be heard. Secondly, I have polled all but one of the members of the petitioners and we are amenable to a delay. And then finally, it would seem appropriate that following the meeting, we would submit a letter with all undersigned that would agree to the delay and would indicate that we are moving forward in a consolidated effort for the appeal. If there's any particular language that that should include, that would be good to hear. And then I believe we should submit that to Pamela. If, if that's appropriate, we'll move ahead with that. So thank you to all the members of the board.
Thank you, Ms. Popham. And I would request for the, for the filing with regard to who's representing whom, that you go ahead and label that as an entry of appearance and state individual who will be the representative and on whose behalf they will be representing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pom-Pam. Appreciate that and thank you for your appearance today and on this item. So I think we should be good now, right? Okay.
So for the next meeting, I'll work with Pam to just put together that short agenda and she'll still get out a link. And so I will, we will reconvene at three o'clock next Friday.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. We've got through those items and again, next meeting, regular meeting on August 26, 2022. With that, I guess we'll go to Agenda Item Number Eight. There's no further discussion on adjournment. Yes, Member Honker?
I would move we adjourn.
Well, second is that motion?
Thank you, Member Bitzer. With that, Ms. Jones, would you mind doing a roll call vote?
Yes, the motion to adjourn. Member Bitzer, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Member Kate?
Yes.
Thank you. Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Honker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Truvio Davis?
Yes.
Adam Chair?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The motion to adjourn passes.
Sorry, I thought I was unneeded. Apologize there. Have a wonderful day, everybody. Thank you for today.
Thanks. Have a good weekend, everyone.
See you next week.